Commissioner Hudak.
Here.
Commissioner Plout.
Here.
Commissioner Shonitzki.
Here.
Vice Mayor Preston.
You.
Mayor Drosky.
Here. If everybody would please stand for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance, which is going to be led to us by tonight by our own Captain Adam Hofstein.
Pledge of Allegiance, delivered by the United States of America and to everybody for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Captain. Thank you, Captain. Well done. I could hear it come from the bottom of your lungs. So we have diaphragm. There you go. Approval of the City Commission minutes from our Budget Workshop Meeting of July 9, 2025, regular City Commission Meeting, August 5, 2025.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion to approve minutes by Commissioner Plout, seconded by Commissioner Hudak. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Let the record show unanimous consent. Next, we have acknowledgement of our City Board minutes from the Non-Uniformed Employees Retirement Plan, May 12, 2025, Community Redevelopment Agency, July 8, 2025, and August 12, 2025, Marine Advisory Board, July 17, 2025, Hillsborough Inlet District, July 21, 2025, Code Compliance, July 22, 2025, and finally, Community Appearance Board, July 23, 2025, and August 13, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Hudak, seconded by Vice Mayor Preston. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Let the record show unanimous consent. Next, we have approval of our agenda for this evening, September 8, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner, excuse me, Vice Mayor Preston, seconded by Commissioner Hudak. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Again, let the record show unanimous consent. Madam Clerk.
For those attending via Zoom online wishing to speak under public comment or an item that's open for public input, please click Raise Hand at the bottom under the Actions tab, and your audio will be unmuted when you are recognized by Mayor Drosky. For those attending via Zoom by telephone, please press star nine to raise your hand, and your audio will be unmuted when you are recognized by Mayor Drosky. Please make sure your audio is unmuted on your end by pressing star six. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. City Attorney, first category we have tonight is words and recognitions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number one is proclamation presented to Allison Volks, AVP of philanthropy and recognition of Feeding South Florida.
Thank you, and it's sponsored by Commissioner Hudak. Commissioner Hudak, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. I don't know if they're here today. From what I hear, the weather has maybe delayed her, but I still want to go ahead and read this. Oh, very good. Excellent. Most excellent. Certificate of Proclamation. Since 1981, Feeding South Florida has worked to address hunger and food insecurities by providing communities with immediate access to nutritious food and other vital resources and support. In South Florida, approximately one individuals, 1 million individuals face hunger. Feeding South Florida leads hunger and poverty advocacy efforts in our community while transforming lives through innovative programming and education that provides economic growth and overall well-being. The city of Deerfield Beach is therefore committed to supporting Feeding South Florida so that together we can achieve a hunger-free South Florida. Now, therefore I, Michael Hudak, District One Commissioner of the city of Deerfield Beach, Florida, in recognition thereof, do hereby proclaim September 25 as Hunger Action Month. And if you'd like to say a few words, please come on up.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners, for allowing us to receive this proclamation on behalf of Feeding South Florida. We appreciate, we serve four counties, and our work involves just really addressing hunger and food insecurity directly, providing individuals with, we have onsite client pantries, we do home-delivered senior meals in your community as well, as well as a school pantry program. We also, in addition to just providing food, do, we help people move away from the cycle of poverty through our case management program. We have workforce training, job training, warehouse training, culinary training, in order to help people live better lives, whatever that looks like to them. So, thank you for this proclamation. We are celebrating and engaging, raising awareness throughout the entire month of September, and appreciate this recognition tonight. Thank you all.
Well, thank you very much. Want to come over to this side? We're going to bring, Rebecca, we're going to bring the entire commission down. Is that okay? Item number two, is Mr. Williams here yet? Nope, he is. Perfect. Understood you're running a little behind because of the rain, but you're, but you're here. Number, item number two, I guess, Mr. City Attorney, if you want to read it, I'll take it from there.
Sure. Certificate of Recognition presented to Ronnie Williams, engineering technician for his efforts with the Southeast 8th Avenue Drainage Improvement Project.
Uh, thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Residents impacted by the Stormwater Drainage Improvement Project, commonly referred to as the Southeast 8th Avenue Area Drainage Improvement Project, expressed their frustration regarding the contractor, continuously closed roads, removal of trees, and delays in the project timeline to the City Commission. Ronnie Williams, engineering technician, was asked to be the direct contact for residents and the contractor for any concern. Mr. Williams has spent the past six months being onsite daily to address homeowner needs. The Environmental Services Department has received multiple compliments to Mr. Williams's responsiveness to residents, his diligence in holding the contractor accountable, and his commitment to completing the project by the end of summer 2025, as promised earlier this year. The project could not have been completed without Mr. Williams's dedication to the city and our residents. On behalf of the City Commission and residents, we thank him for his hard work and his consistently going above and beyond his regular responsibilities over the past several months to ensure the successful completion of the project. Mr. Williams, if you can come on down? Would you like to address the commission?
Mayor, Commissioners, Director, Joseph, E D Engineer, thank you guys for just trusting me to get the project done. I also want to thank the residents and also our department, the Water Department, Utility Department that came out and also assisted on this project. I'm proud that we were able to save the money that we did on this project and to get it done as quickly as possible. So, thank you guys for trusting me to get this done. Appreciate you guys, and thank you again.
Thank you. We have a certificate for you as well. If you'd just join us down over here. Anyone who brings mom and dad is okay in my book. Mr. City Attorney, item number three.
Item number three is a discussion and update regarding Public Safety Services.
Mr. City Manager?
Can we minimize the?
Yeah, very good. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, residents, and interested parties that are here today. Today, I'm providing an update on the BSO contract status since the last commission meeting, from what was presented at the last commission meeting. As it turns out, just prior to the last commission meeting, the Broward Sheriff's Office sent a proposed contract beginning April 26 for fire, and they also sent a proposed contract beginning April 26 for police. So, I'm going to mention parts of the provisions in those contracts that were sent to us, as well as to just recap where we are today on both fire and police. So, on the fire side, this is the fiscal year '25 to fiscal year '26 comparison. The gross change from last year to what the sheriff's office submitted to us as their request for this year is $3.9 million increase, which is a gross increase of 11%. After doing an analysis, the $3.9 million, or the increase rather, exceeds the contractual cap by $1.1 million. Nothing has changed on that since we received the May letter. Any questions on the fire? On the law enforcement contract, we On the law enforcement contract, we received their proposal in May of '25. That proposal would have increased us from fiscal year '25 at $32.4 million to $35.7 million, which is a $3.3 million gross increase, which is 10%. After doing an analysis on that, it exceeds the contractual cap by $1.2 million. The best, I should say, the cheapest counter proposal that has come to us from the sheriff's office, which is a contract that would be effective April 26, which I believe their intent would be to include, even with October, with what had been previously referred to as Option Three. That is the one that I have been asked about a few times, that has been referenced to being within 1% of the necessary amount. That actually is an increase of $1.7 million gross. It's not, it's a savings when the savings, people are talking about a savings, it's a savings from the original 3.3, but it's still an increase of $1.7 million, which is a gross increase of 5.2%, and that is accomplished not only by a $216,000 reduction that was covered in the last commission meeting, but also by a staffing reduction of 5.3% from 152 positions to 144. If you do an apples-to-apples comparison, the 144 versus the 144, this represents approximately a 9% increase, and again, the cap is 5%. On the two contracts that were received, the proposed contracts, this language is from Section Six in both the police and fire contracts, and Section Six has to do with how costs elevate year over year. So, on the police side, you see that the language that BSO has proposed says, "Other than health insurance premiums, workers' compensation premiums, other post-employment benefits," and then it lists some other things. The reason why health insurance premiums and other post-employment benefits are highlighted is because those are new. In our contract that exists right now, and in previous contracts, health insurance premiums were capped. In the current contract that we have, it's capped at 9% per year. The proposed contract that we received from BSO would have no cap on health insurance increases. Also, posted, other post-employment benefits have never been included in the pre, in the current contract. It's not including post-employment benefits. So, now, the sheriff's office is proposing that post-employment benefits would also be carved out and not be subject to a 5% cap. They would have no cap at all. Also, highlighted in yellow is the proposed language that BSO has put into the contract that says that the city agrees to waive the cap on the first two fiscal years of the agreement, assuming that fiscal year '26 would be the first year. That means that fiscal year '27 would have no cap on the increase, no cap on, on the cost increase. It's very similar in the fire, it's just a separate section, but again, the health insurance premiums now would have no cap, whereas currently, we have a 9% cap. And the other post-employment benefits, which currently are, are part of the 5% cap, would be carved out, and those would have no cap. And then, the other part of the language is that the city would agree to waive the cap for the first two fiscal years of the agreement. Presumably, again, those two years would be the fiscal year '26, and then also fiscal year '27. The numbers that we have for fiscal year '26 are the ones that I had presented earlier in the presentation. Any questions? Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Is that the end of your?
That's it.
Your slides?
Yes.
Okay. Vice Mayor Preston, I just, before Vice Mayor, just real quick. This is a discussion item this evening, so it is not open to the public. Of course, during the public comment, which is after item number eight, you're more than welcome to make your comments at that section on any item that you want to, but as far as this item at this time, it's just a discussion item for the commission, an update by the city manager, so there'll be no public input at this time. But again, public comment, you can say whatever you want during that particular time. And with that, Vice Mayor Preston, you had your light on first.
Thank you. Why no caps on the, on the insurance?
That's a question for BSO. I do not know. That's something that, you know, BSO has moved the health insurance premiums into the no-cap provision. It had been 9%, but for whatever reason, for, I guess, for, you know, for their purposes, they're putting the health insurance premiums, they're removing the 9% cap on the health insurance premiums, and they're taking the other post-employment benefits out of the 5% cap and not having a cap on that either. Anything else, Vice Mayor?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hudak, you were next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it. I've got a couple of comments. Yes, we are still negotiating with BSO. So, just because we're, we've received a letter of termination does not mean that we have not stopped negotiating with BSO and are hopeful to continue with our relationship. This is great that points out that there are two contracts. They're separate contracts with BSO. One is for law enforcement, and the other is for fire rescue, as the city manager has alluded to. Both contracts run through March of 2026, and both contracts contain a 5% cap increase from one year to the next. Deerfield Beach is different from other cities in the fact that we have current contracts with BSO that they're trying to violate. The first contract is the one that BSO is not talking about, and that's the fire rescue contract. These numbers have been talked about ad nauseam, but I'm going to go ahead and go over them again, just so that the public completely understands. Our fiscal year 2025 cost was $35 million, $35.6 million. A 5% increase would equal $1.8 million for a fiscal year 2026 budget of $27 million, $27.4 million. The initial consideration rate, and I'm now going to refer to this as the demand letter, since no reduction in this rate has been offered by BSO, on the fire rescue contains an 11.2% increase, equaling $3.9 million, for a fiscal year 2026 cost of $39,500,000. This surpasses the expected budget by $2.15 million. Please remember, our current contract only goes until March of 2026, so we do not know the full cost of the taxpayers for entirety of fiscal year 2026. As stated, in this contract, the city supposedly has agreed to waive the cap for the first two fiscal years of the agreement. If we were to mirror the numbers to match the end of the contract, the 5% budgeted increase would equal $890,000. BSO's requested increase is $1.96 million, or $1.7 million over what the city has budgeted based on our contract. In my meeting with the sheriff, BSO leader, and BSO leadership, the only ideas presented to me to reduce the fire rescue overages were the following: Increase our bill rate to Hillsborough Beach. They pay Deerfield for fire services. Increase the charges to the medical insurance company of our residents for ambulance services. Demand first responders' charge be diverted from Coconut Creek to Deerfield Beach for turnpike and unincorporated incidents. None of those things reduce this overage. The law enforcement contract, this is the contract that the sheriff has been exclusively referring to. Our fiscal year 2025 cost was $32.4 million. A 5% increase equals $1.6 million. For fiscal year 2026, the budgeted cost was $34.4 million. We already know about the initial consideration rate of $10.22 million. After numerous discussions, BSO's best offer, as presented by our city manager, increased to 5.02% or $63,000 over the cap for the fiscal year 2026. If we mirror the numbers to match the contract end date of March 26, the overage is only $31,907. Someone not involved with the negotiations would argue that this is a great offer by BSO, showing their dedication to our longstanding partnership and trying to resolve our contract issues, but the details are what matter. Since BSO has never disclosed it in public on how they were able to reduce the $2.2 million cap overage for fiscal year 2026, I'm going to reiterate what the city manager just said. First step, removal of $201,900 in capital expenditures, or about three police cars. Removal of $15,000 in operating expenses, about the gas for those police cars. That reduces the overage to $1.9 million. So, where do they get the rest? They're going to reduce one CSA. They're going to reduce one clerical specialist, and they're going to remove or reduce three deputy sheriffs.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, that's six, six deputies.
Six, six deputy sheriffs. Thank you very much. Remember, these proposals are for fiscal year 2026, but the contract only goes until March 31 of 2026. During my meeting with BSO leadership, they presented this option to me, and my exact words to them were, "I would not agree to reducing staff." So, I can understand why the city manager rejected this proposal and did not present it to me. Our current BSO law enforcement contract includes 152 law enforcement personnel, not 144. And as was on the previous slide, again, reduction of police staff is not something that I am for or would agree to. Reducing staff also violates our contract. We have the lowest crime rate of any city in our area, and it's thanks to the men and women who wear that uniform. So, I thank you, because it's your hard effort that makes our city so safe. Reducing our law enforcement personnel to get us within budget is a short-sighted, quick fix that ultimately hurts the city. The reason you have a contract is so you can project your cost and budget accordingly. If we were to approve BSO's current contract proposal, our rate increase over a 5% cap until March of 2026 would be $31,907 in law enforcement and $1.077 million in fire rescue. A total of $1.1 million over what was budgeted. And we would have six fewer deputies to patrol our city. For fiscal year 2026, the amount could be doubled to $2.2 million, except for the fact, as the city manager just stated, the proposed contracts have no caps for the increase year over year in years one and years two. Based on the current negotiations with BSO, the budget for police and fire for fiscal year 2026 has to be adjusted from the original number of $71.4 million to $75.3 million. That's $4 million that we have to take from other projects in order to cover the cost. At the first reading of Broward County Commission, they have only approved a 3.1 increase in their BSO budget, not the 9% requested by the sheriff. By my calculations, that's a $60 million shortfall. Where do you think the sheriff is going to get that money from to make up the shortfall? Approving a contract with BSO that contains no annual increase cap for years one and two should give you a hint. Please understand, we are still in negotiations with BSO, and I am hopeful for a solution that continues our relationship. I have a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers that I represent. Besides costs, my additional concerns are as follows. BSO has shown no interest in honoring the current contract, so how could I approve another five-year contract with them? The new contracts BSO has presented to the city have additional carve-outs that the city manager just relayed to everybody. The new contracts BSO presented to the city have no cap rate increase for years one and two. A full fiscal study needs to be performed before I'm convinced of how to proceed. Will bringing law enforcement and fire rescue in-house cost the taxpayers less than the $100 million that it's projected to cost now by fiscal year 2029? I do not know. All options need to be evaluated, but the bottom line is, we need to be able to control our costs. Please understand, the BSO Training Center, aviation units, SWATs, and all other special BSO functions are Broward County assets, not BSO assets. 28% of your ad valorem taxes go to the Broward County to pay for these services. They are not part of any contract any city has with BSO and will not go away, no matter how the city of Deerfield Beach proceeds. At the end of the day, the cost for law enforcement and fire rescue is going to exceed $100 million by fiscal year 2029, and account for 50% of our general fund budget. We need a tool that enables us to control these costs, whether it's a contract with BSO that they adhere to, bringing one or both functions in-house, or partnering with another city. Until we have a complete fiscal study that reflects how best to control cost for law enforcement and fire rescue and ensure the safety of our residents, no decision on how to proceed should be made. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Shnitski, you had your light on next?
So, basically, I have a question for the city manager, Rodney. So, basically, what you're saying is, with the police proposal, there's no cap the first two years. That's like just writing out a blank check and signing it. Is that what you're saying? Just getting a blank check or a credit card and said, "Here, spend what you want." Is that what you're saying?
It says that the city would have no provision in the contract to argue against whatever increase the sheriff might propose in the following year. There is no cap, so, you know, this year, for example, we're back and forth over the 5% cap, but there would be no cap on fiscal, the second fiscal year of the agreement.
Just like that blank check. Would you sign a blank check? I mean, I'm just asking that question. I don't know. Just sign a blank check. The other thing with the, the health insurance is, again, no cap on that. I assume the city would be held responsible, health insurance liability, right?
So, if the health insurance costs go up for the employees of the sheriff's office this year and in previous years, it's been capped at 9%. If those costs increase, whatever the, whatever the increase is on the health insurance premiums in this proposed contract, there would be no cap, so it would be a pass-through cost to the city.
So, that means, say, a fire rescue, something, God forbid, something bad happens, and there's a massive lawsuit that could financially really injure the city, correct?
Well, I think this deals with the health insurance for the employees, so this is their medical, dental, eye-type insurance. It's not, it's not the liability insurance of the sheriff's office.
I have a question, sir. Who has been speaking with BSO now, and when was the last communication?
Both myself and the city attorney have been in contact with the sheriff's office.
All right. In terms of, say, mediation, it looks like both sides are at cross with each other. Is there any, any window of maybe looking at a mediation, getting an impartial mediation, to be a broker, you know, to sit down between the two parties and see if we can come to a good resolution for both parties? Is that something that, that has been looked at?
Right now, the, there's a contract in place, so it's a matter of whether the commission wants to, I mean, if the commission wants to disband that contract, that's a different, that's a different item entirely. But we do have a current contract. It's, it's a matter of whether we are going to expect that the contract be held to or not. So, that's a different direction. If that's an item at some point to consider, that's, that certainly is something to look at.
We're examining the new contract, you know, that's being proposed, the options with the new contract. I was just wondering, has it been maybe examined to maybe have an impartial mediator that could broker the new contract? Because that seems to be the impasse here. Has that been looked at? Or is that something we could look at?
We have not looked at a mediator for the contracts for April of '26. Those are kind of far out for us. Those would be the proposed contracts for consideration if we were to continue with a contract with BSO after the current contract would expire in March. with a contract with BSO after the current contract would expire in March. Just also realize that with the exercise of the provision of termination to lead into the transition period, that transition period begins October one.
And one other question, sir. I know some surveys were sent out in the Bucky Graham concerning the situation right now. I just wanted to know who put out that survey, you know, who put it together. I'm just curious.
The survey was put out by the city to start to understand what the concerns are of the residents and also the employees.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Plow?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm at a little bit of a disadvantage in that I'm the next to the last person to speak on this issue. So some of my points have been made, but it is important for my constituents to know how I feel about everything. First, I think we're all in agreement that the BSO, fire, rescue, and the police are the best around. I love them. I would like to be able to continue with them. That's really going to take some negotiations, looking at the limitations that have been placed on us by the breach, what I call a breach of this contract. For me, a contract is something that's binding. It creates trust. It's an indicator of future trust. So I'm very disappointed about the caps being violated. It's very hard to plan a budget for people. It's tough with inflation and everything else to keep taxes down. I would imagine that the survey that the city just put out is probably well over ninety percent that people appreciate BSO and want them. But I can bet it's ninety percent that they don't want the taxes to go up. Okay? So my own personal thing about dealing with BSO is my personal representative, Chief Hofstein. He's the best guy, the finest. I've called him. I try not to call him in the middle of the night, but I do call him on some evenings. I have never had a time where he didn't answer on the first ring. He's respectful. He's accountable. He gets things done. I think it was twenty-four hours it took to get some graffiti removed off the McDonald's wall on the west side of the wall in my district. Seen graffiti around different cities, and it was a terrible thing. Somebody just did up our bridge down in Sullivan Park. But I was pretty mad about that. I didn't show him any anger, of course. I just notified him of it. But he said, well, you know, if the city doesn't have anybody, we'll paint it, you know, by tomorrow, this afternoon. I mean, he's a fantastic example of how BSO deals with the city. In my personal life, as people know, and I've mentioned before, I'm no financial guru. I've just done basic financial planning, sitting down with a family, twenty-five, thirty years old, having their first kids, trying to get together an emergency fund, you know, three months' money so that they can look towards a long-term plan of trying to retire. And although ninety-nine percent of this conversation is just on this initial renewal in twenty twenty-six, to me, to just be a part of violating the contract and just, you know, hey, let's just go with it and let's just do it. Let's kick the can down the road like the federal government does. That's how I look at it. And just to kick the can down the road would take us with those increases. For twenty-five was sixty-eight million. We're looking at seventy-five million and a few dollars to discounts on that, seventy-four, six, I believe. Okay, what we were talking about. But by twenty-seven, we're looking at eighty-three and a half million. Twenty-nine, we're looking at a hundred million. I mean, it's just going out of control. And that's the purpose of a contract. That's so we can plan for it, so we can try to keep taxes down. And I would definitely, for the benefit of our residents and for our own personal conscience, we have to really look hard at negotiating for now, but looking down the road to see what's best for our city and what's best for our residents. And we definitely have to explore other options, such as having our own departments, one or the other or both, getting together with another city, something. And if we don't do that, and if we go the road that we're going, then so be it. At least we have all of the options on the table. But I feel that we need to move forward. We apparently are not going to be able to stop being billed monthly, month-to-month, starting October the first. So we're just going to have to do that if it happens. We don't have any control over it because we're not the ones that canceled the contract. Now, the contract was not violated because in the terms, either one of us can cancel the contract. So they chose to do that. Okay? So we have to explore all the options, and that's how I feel about it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Pardon me, Vice Mayor Preston?
Thank you, Mayor. My colleague, Commissioner Hudak, was saying about getting some of the numbers. One of the things that I asked in the last commission meeting, if you remember, was that we should do a study. Do you remember that?
Yes.
Okay. So now, that study is important. That study is very important because it then begins to reveal to us exactly where we are. What do the numbers say? I mean, everybody can have an opinion, and everybody can say, you know, we can do this and we can do that. And in terms of retrieving our fire department and our police department, but all of us up here have a fiduciary responsibility to do what is best for this city and its residents. The numbers will begin to tell us exactly where we are. The numbers will reveal to us the position that we're in, and it also can tell us if, whatever option you choose, about what you're going to be dealing with down the road. I don't know why we, how we got into this situation, but somewhere in this process where we are right now is the answer. What becomes the challenge from BSO's side and from our side? Are we bold enough to find it? Are we going to be stubborn enough on both sides to say, you know what, we're going to see how this rides out? We all have a responsibility to do what is right for the residents of this city. There's a reason why you don't have a lot of complaints from either the BSO side or the fire side. There's a reason why that happens. Reason is because you have highly qualified people in those positions doing a great job. One of the things that we would have to consider, that if we were to retrieve our fire department today, what would that look like tomorrow? What would that look like? If we voted right now, let's take our fire department back, what would that look like? That's a conversation that perhaps we should have in the future about the escalating cost that my colleague was just talking about, and how much is it going to cost us down the road? I don't have a problem having that conversation. But is it the best conversation to have now? And I say, no. We have to find a comparable line with BSO, and it has to be demanded that we find the answer, because the answer is there if we want to find it. But are we bold enough to do that? Are we strong enough to do that? So in the end, this is not about a bunch of guys up here sitting, voting one way or the other. It's about how we represent the people out there that are expecting us to do the right thing in their interest. And I will tell you right now, in my opinion, we are not set up right now to take our fire department back or the police department. The administrative infrastructure and the physical infrastructure is not in place for us to do so. And I believe that the financial burden would be so great that it would be very challenging for this city to be able to then say that we have a quality quality service that we're going to deliver. And so the city manager has given us the information, and I think he did good with that, getting us all the information that we need. And now the time has come for adults to put everything aside and say, listen, on the BSO's side, there's a responsibility to serve this community. And obviously, the elected, I'm sorry, the appointed administrators in our staff has got the same philosophy to make sure that we're doing the right thing for our community, for the people. And so I just tell you that we're not ready, in my opinion. We're not ready to do that. We have to sign a contract with BSO. If BSO wants us, if they want us, then they need to really understand that you need to give us a contract. I'm not saying sign a five-year contract. Maybe that's a two-year contract. Maybe that's a three-year, which gives us a window for two years or three years to be able to prepare for something as big as retrieving your fire department or your police department back. You have then a window. But to do it now with not even the numbers in place for us to say, here's what it looks like, I think would just be disastrous. We need to know what those numbers are. And so let me ask you, Mr. City, when could we expect to get those numbers? When will those numbers be available?
I would say within sixty to ninety days, we could have all of that data together. And also, to be very clear, there's nothing about my presentation or anything that I've said about pushing to go to our own police and/or fire department. That's a decision that the commission will make, I'm sure, after extensive community input along those lines, if they decide to do that anyway. And furthermore, we have a contract right now with BSO. There's no need to sign a contract. We have one unless the desire of the commission is to come up with a different contract entirely. But we have a contract that makes provision for police and fire services up through the end of the fiscal year of twenty-seven.
I just want to say also that you're right. Our city manager, Rodney Brimlow, does not have the authority to say whether we have our own police department or our fire department. That's not his ability to do that. His job is to do exactly what he's done, is give us the information so that we can make informed decisions. And he has done that. I have no problem with the way that he has given us information. And I've called him multiple times to try to understand it from multiple levels and from different views. And he's always been able to provide me with that information. This will become a decision of this commission. And I just hope that whatever we do, we do it in the best interest of our residents, the best interest of this city, and also we must not forget the many men and women that represent both sides, that do the job that we all celebrate them for. We must remember that. These are their careers too. And the other thing is that if we took our fire department back today, what would that look like? Like I said, what would that look like? Who are you going to put in those stations, and who are you going to put in the trucks? Are we going to have quality people like we have now? There's a lot of consideration. Let's look at the numbers. Let's look at the numbers that will give us an overview and some insight to where we're going. If we don't do that, then we're flying the plane blind. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Shnitzky, before you go, I'm going to jump in into this. I likewise want to thank the men and women of BSO. I was out there Saturday to a shred-a-thon that they sponsored in our city, out in the western portion of our city, and I went out there and thanked them for their service and let them know that this is not their fight. This is the adults that are fighting here, and they're the children that are caught in between. And they just need to ignore the noise and continue to do the great work that they do on a day-to-day basis. But Vice Mayor, you asked that you're confused how this all started. I'm not confused at all. The sheriff terminated our contract. We didn't ask for this fight. This fight was brought upon us. Our contract was terminated. We had a valid binding contract that was terminated by the sheriff's office, who the sheriff then went on to say that he was going to go nuclear on our city manager. He called you unjust, corrupt, unethical, and despicable. And he called all of us up there that. All of us were to corrupt, unjust, ethical, and despicable. Those are his words, not mine. So let's first of all figure out what this is not. This is not anymore a war against our city manager for some false police report that was allegedly filed. Because the Sun Sentinel published an article over the weekend that said, "The sheriff has repeatedly accused Brimlow of filing a false police report, a charge that Brimlow forcefully denied at a crowded meeting August nineteenth. Brimlow carefully avoided criticizing Tony personally." The Sun Sentinel asked BSO for a copy of a false police report, as Tony has alleged. "We don't have a copy," BSO said. "The agency referred us to FDLE, which did not call it a false police report." So the idea that there's a false police report, let's get that out of our heads. Let's move on from that. I agree with the rest of you. This is about the numbers and providing public safety going forward. And the city has six viable options, and we're not bluffing on any of them. Now, you can kind of group them together. You can group police and fire together. So it's really three options, but it's really six when you look at it from police and fire. Weekend one, renew with BSO. But as some of my colleagues stated as well, if the sheriff has canceled our contract once already, what's to prevent our contract from being canceled again? You can go through all these great negotiations and do this, and then with a termination clause, you're done. You're right back to where you are now. Second, we can go in-house. And third, we can do something on a regional basis. And like I said, each of those components has a fire and a police option to it. We know the numbers. We know the infrastructure. We know the staffing. So whether we're ready or not, that's a decision for this commission to make. Mr. City Manager, if you have those numbers, let's get that out. The residents are looking forward to this. They don't want to hear any more back and forth between the sheriff and the commission. They want to know full transparency. What are the numbers? What is it going to take for BSO to run our police and fire? What is it going to take for the city to do it, and what is it going to take to do it on a regional basis? If you can provide those numbers in sixty to ninety days, let's have a workshop. Let's bring BSO in and present them, and they can have, they can present to us, you know, their best-case scenario under their contract. They can tell us where we're wrong, like, City, you can't do this for X, Y, and Z reasons. And then you can present your case, Mr. City Manager, on what we would like to see as far as an in-house and regional option as well. And you can tell us, the commission, where BSO was wrong in their eyes, and let's get it all out there. So it's not just the politicians yelling back and forth, it's the residents, the ones who are going to pay this bill. Let them see it and be transparent to them so we can make the best decision with all the facts and the numbers available to us. That's what we need to do. The name-calling's got to stop. Let's bring this to a point where we can talk about it in a formal setting and get the numbers that everybody wants, get them out there. Now, I've obviously stirred up my colleagues because all the lights went back on, but but that's what needs to be done. But please, don't have short memories, guys. Don't have short memories because your residents think that you're unjust, corrupt, and unethical. That's what you hear out there. Those are the words that were planted. So please don't forget that. Every single one of you should be hearing that. So don't have a short memory. I'm not saying that should influence your decision to go one way or another, but this is something that cannot be taken in a vacuum. This is something that is a large item that we have to consider all the moving pieces to. And there's very many moving pieces to this. But we're not going to make a decision on our police and fire today. We couldn't. We don't know those numbers. But the city manager here has those numbers, and I think we need to have those numbers presented to us so we can make the best decision with the best information in front of us, and we will go from there. Commissioner Shnitzky, you were next.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Basically, can't we do, just like our sister city, Pompano Beach, is doing? Pompano Beach hired an independent consultant to do a study to get all the numbers out, all the scenarios out. You know, they're a bigger city than us. They have a hundred thirteen thousand people. We have eighty-seven. We have a hundred fifty-three police officers, they have about two hundred and forty. So, but they're getting an independent consultant to do an in-depth study. So they, all the numbers and everything will be available so everyone could see. Also, Pompano Beach made an offer to extend the contract, or at least to do a one-year contract. I understand what Todd is saying, but is that at least an option that we could present? Also, in terms of the public, maybe we should have a public safety advisory board. Because I really want to know what the public is thinking, I'm asking people and I'm getting different scenarios. I think maybe if we made a public safety advisory board, there would be more dialogue. And I'm very happy about the workshops, I think the public should be involved in the workshops, everything should be transparent. Because we represent the public and we need all the information to be out, so that we could give the best guidance for them. So that's my feeling.
I'm not sure who is next, Commissioner, who are you?
You got it. Um, now you piqued my interest with this police report thing. So to do my due diligence, I kind of went on ChatGPT to find out the difference between a police report and filing a complaint with FDLE. So I, I figured I'd educate everybody here, just so that we call kind of no. A police report documents an incident for permanent record and serves as an official account for an investigation, insurance, and potential court cases. A false police report is when a person intentionally provides false information to law enforcement about the commission of a crime that did not happen, or is an untrue statement made with the intent to deceive or impede a law enforcement agency. An FDLE complaint is a formal accusation of misconduct by a law enforcement officer or agency to the Florida Department of Law Enforcement for investigations concerning alleged misconduct, discrimination, or violation of standards by certified police officer. If our city manager submitted a false police report, why has the sheriff not produced it? If this is not personal, why did the sheriff direct union leaders to sign a no-confidence letter against our city manager when the union did not take such vote? If this is not personal, why did the sheriff send a letter to our city manager terminating his medical benefits? We want to partnership with an organization that is honest. We're talking about the top law enforcement agency in the county. If this is how they're conducting our biz, their business, I have serious concerns. I have no issues with the men and women of Broward Sheriff's Police and Fire. They are top-notch, we've all said that. The challenge I have is with BSO leadership. We keep talking about a contract, we have a contract, our contract says five percent cap. When we said adhere to the contract, BSO terminated our contract. They gave us one week to say, these are our numbers, if you don't like it, your contract is terminated. Why did they do it on that date? Why didn't they wait? Well, they terminated the contract effective September thirtieth, because BSO's fiscal year starts October first. That's why they had to do it by that time. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, you were saying that uh, the names that I was called, uh, all of us was called. Mayor, I can deal with a lot of things, and name-calling, some of the names that have been called on me, that would actually be a compliment. So, uh, I can handle them, I can, I can handle that sort of thing. But what I can't handle, and what is difficult, is when we let those kinds of things get in the way of negotiations. Okay, some things were done and said that I don't agree with and that I don't like. But I get a chance to serve with the people up here, and I think the residents of, of uh, of this fine city know that there's, that they have in place some of the most progressive commission that this city has ever seen. And they're doing some great things in this wonderful city. The people up here listen, and they care, and there's a passion about what we do. And so with that, we're obligated, again, if we're bold enough, if we can stop the name-calling, if we can just get some things out of the way that has to do with this city and how it's dealt with in, in relation to this police department and the fire department and, and this contract, then we could do it. But it requires adults to be able to do that, this is a challenging moment for this city, a very challenging moment. And I'm just saying, Mr. City Manager, uh, some of my colleagues have alluded to it, uh, Commissioner Plout did, and so did uh, um, Commissioner Shnetzky. So I'm gonna say this, and you and I have talked about some of these things, as soon as possible, as soon as possible, there ought to be a venue set up for the citizens of Deerfield Beach to weigh in. I think that this platform in which we have now is, it's, it's, it's kind of unfair. Because one of the things that the mayor started off with was that they can't weigh in tonight because this is just a discussion. We need to have a platform where they can weigh in. What do the citizens of Deerfield Beach feel about everything that we've talked about? So as soon as possible, as soon as possible, we need to set that up. And I think that you must take into consideration the venue in which you have it. I don't know that the Tignor, Tignor Center can handle the people coming from District one, two, three, and four. Once they know that that's going to happen, from four, three, two, and one, and everything in between, can, you know. Uh, I don't know that the Doubletree can handle it. To me, if it is at all possible, I think that we should look to the high school and see if we could set a date so that it would hold the numbers um, or come closer to holding the numbers, so that the citizens of Deerfield Beach can come out and weigh in on this very serious, serious, serious issue that is in front of us. And like I said, and I know I'm getting the calls, um, I, and I want to let you know, I'm not going to make any decision based on emotion, I'm not gonna do it. I know people are saying, hey, let's do this and let's do this. As I said before, I just, I'm not against having a conversation of looking at what it would take to retrieve the fire department and the police department. But like I said, and I'm not ashamed to say it, and I don't back up, we're not prepared to do it right now, we're just not. We're just not. Now maybe two years from now, three years from now, we are in a, in a position to do it. I just think that we should just settle down and hopefully, from BSO's side, that they will understand what we're trying to do for our citizens, because I think, I've called you many times, Mr. City Manager, about this information, and each time you've answered the phone, each time you've given me information, the information that I needed. You've actually done a good job uh with this, informing me. And so if I can get along with you, and I'm not the easiest person to get along with, but if I can get along with you, I know some people from BSO can get along with you, so we need to get this done. So I hope BSO is listening, let's get this done. There is some opportunity there, we just simply got to find it. Thank you, Mayor.
Speaking of getting things done, we have the budget to get done tonight too, so uh, briefly, Commissioner Plout, Commissioner Shnetzky, Commissioner Hudak, briefly, and then we're moving on.
Thank you, Mayor, very briefly. Um, I just want to uh agree with the Vice Mayor that we do need the numbers. I want to agree with the Mayor that the name-calling has got to stop. And never did I dream, after being in office for only five months, that I would not only be called corrupt by the mayor of the county, I mean, the uh, the sheriff of the county, excuse me. Um, so that, 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 that has to stop, you know, we, we need to be adults. Um, we, you know, we need to uh, we need to work this out. And I would just want to say, just briefly, I want to caution anyone out there that, that relies on, gets their information from, from social media, particularly Facebook. Um, you know, if somebody has an opinion on Facebook, that's great, you can agree with them or not agree with them. But if you go on, on, on a Facebook or a social media, and somebody tells you where somebody is, what somebody is doing, what somebody is thinking, it's, it's probably false. Um, I've been criticized for not going to some of the town hall meetings by the sheriff. You know what? I went to the last one at the church. Was I in that church? No. Did I go to the meeting? Yes. Reason I wasn't in the church is because I've learned over ten years in the Planning and Zoning Board as chairman and being counseled on the sunshine law every day. I didn't want to open my big mouth and respond to something and maybe be in trouble with the sunshine law, so what did I do? I did the next best thing, I attended the meeting with two of my District Four representatives, my close friends that I call my inner circle, watched the whole thing from start to finish on a big screen TV, live, on YouTube. And these days, it's not like when I grew up and, and the kids in the schoolyard said, hey, you gotta see this next movie out, it's really funny. They're not gonna play it at the theater until uh, uh, but, but until Saturday. And I knew that if I didn't see it by Saturday, I might never see that movie again in the rest of my life. Well, this is a new thing, the Zoom and YouTube and everything else, we all know that. I was at the meeting, so I could get and find out what everybody else was saying, to get a flavor for both sides and everything. So I, I just want to get people to know that social media is not always true. You can appreciate opinions, but don't believe when somebody says that they're at a pizza fundraiser when they're actually at a meeting uh with two close friends and getting the truth from each side, getting this different uh thing. So I just want to caution on social media, and, and I could go on, but I won't, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Shnetzky, briefly.
Yes, sir. Briefly, I have a question for the city manager, and the mayor had touched on it, the infrastructure. I know in Century Village, Fire Station sixty-six was built in about nineteen seventy-four, it's old and falling apart. I mean, I don't, I don't even think it, it adheres to ADA standards. And, and I think they're, they're even working in the trailer, some of the fire uh personnel are working in a trailer. My question to you is, if we do move ahead, are there any plans to have a decent, modern infrastructure that these firefighters could work? Because I'm telling you, Fire Station sixty-six is obsolete, it should be torn, torn down. So I'm just asking that question, is there some sort of plan or guidance for that? That's one question, do I have another question?
Yes, the, the plan is still being worked on by Director Sean Gladia from, on public safety. But there is, uh, the studies have already been done, and, uh, and the recommendations are being compiled on the public safety infrastructure.
My other question is, again, I always care about, you know, our city, our city's future, to me, that's the bottom line. All this other stuff is, is really not on point to me, what matters is how it affects the city. I have a question to the city attorney, does our liability risk increase if we don't have a new contract before October one? If it's canceled, does our liability risk increase towards the city if we don't have a new contract before October?
So under the existing agreement, if the contract is terminated, BSO provides, the transition provision goes into effect and BSO um is to provide police, law enforcement, and fire services for up to twenty-four months. So the services would still be provided. Um, so I would not anticipate any additional liability exposure solely as a result of um the contract terminating because of the transition provision. And since I have the opportunity, I really have to encourage you to get going on the budget and um military hearings, because it's a statutory process and it's um past eight, so.
Commissioner Hudak, briefly.
I'll be very brief. We, nobody, first of all, we have a contract with BSO, okay? We have asked them, what changes can you make to comply with that contract? And I've already gone over what those changes are. They've also presented us with a new contract already. Highlighted in yellow, the city has agreed to a waived cap for the first two fiscal years of this agreement. If that's a negotiating tool, I'm not going to agree to it, so BSO could take that out right now. Um, so there, I've negotiated that. Nobody is saying that we're going to move forward with anything until this study is done. We've got two years to make a decision, that's what this transition period is for. So we're not making any decisions tonight on what's happening, you know, October second. Uh, so let's just slow down a little bit, let's realize that right now, our contract is slated to end October first. If BSO wants to comply with the current contract, we can move it until April of twenty twenty-six. Um, BSO has not shown any reason that they want to comply with the current contract. They want to cut heads, and they don't want to do anything on the fireside. Neither one of, both of those items violate the contract, there's no negotiations anymore. The, we've, we've, we've made our point, we've said what our stand is, we have a legally binding contract. Follow it, and we're good until March of twenty twenty-six. For the new contracts, again, the city has waived the cap for the first two fiscal years of an agreement. I don't know of any of us who would even, in their right mind, agree to any contract like that. That's the blank check that Commissioner Shnetzky was talking about. So yeah, we can negotiate that all you want, but as long as that's in there, as far as I'm concerned, we don't have a contract. But just because October first rolls around, doesn't mean that we're still not gonna negotiate contracts in good faith with BSO. It just means that now we're in this transition period where our costs will be actual, as opposed to what's on the contract. So, you know, October first, everything is gonna be exactly as it was today. Same BSO, police and fire, they're gonna be doing the excellent job that they, they always do. And this gives us an opportunity to look at, you know, where we are at as a city, what we can afford. Are we with a partner that is going to honor the contract? That's the bottom line, and I'm sorry if it was too long.
No worries, uh, we do have to move on to the budget, I'm sure we could do this all night, uh, but Mr. City Manager, um, any last comments? You guys uh obviously have the commission comments at the end of the meeting, but we do need to, to move on to the budget, so item number four, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, items four, five, and six uh are gonna be presented together. We will need separate votes on that, we're about to start the first of two um, public hearings on the milage and budget that will occur in the month of September. Um, so I'm gonna read the titles for items four through six into the record, make a brief statement pursuant to um Florida law, and then turn it over to CFO for the presentation, so bear with me for a minute. Item number four is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, adopting the milage rate to be levied by the city for fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty-five, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, stating the percentage change by which the milage rate exceeds the rollback rate as computed pursuant to Section two hundred point zero six five Florida statutes, providing for conflicts, severability, and an effective date. Item number five is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, adopting the final budget for the fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty-five, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, authorizing encumbrances and carryforward of funding to fulfill outstanding purchase orders, providing for conflicts, severability, and an effective date. Uh, item number six is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, approving the budget for the Deerfield Beach Community Redevelopment Agency for the fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty-five, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, providing for funding through tax increment financing as provided for in Part Three, Chapter one sixty-three Florida statutes, providing for severability and an effective date. That's first reading of all three of the ordinances that I just read into the record. And now the statement, uh, the City of Deerfield Beach's proposed operating milage rate for fiscal year twenty twenty-six, which is the fiscal year that commences October one, twenty twenty-five, is six point zero zero one eight mils, which is seven point five nine percent more than the rollback rate of five point five seven eight six mils calculated pursuant to Florida law. The total voted debt service milage is equal to point one seven one one mils for a total proposed milage rate for fiscal year twenty twenty-six for the City of Deerfield Beach of six point one seven two nine mils. Mr. CFO.
District Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager, City Attorney, residents, and general public. Today, September eight, twenty twenty-five, is the first public hearing to adopt the proposed milage rate and to adopt the city budget for fiscal year beginning October first, twenty twenty-five, and ending September thirty, twenty twenty-six, as required by TRIM or Truth in Milage Act. as required by TRIM or Truth in Millage Act. Before I start, I want to remind everyone that it's an effort to full disclosure and transparency. Information presented as well as the budget workshop information on July 9th, budget message from city manager to commissioners, budget in brief, which was prepared, by the way, for the first time this year, capital plan with details for each project and fleet, and additional detailed information are all available at the city budget department website. You may use the link listed under agenda, item number five. As a reminder, the final public hearing will be occurring in September 15, 2025 at 7:00 PM. September 15 meeting will also have final adoption of fire rescue, stormwater and nuisance abatement assessments. Today, we'll start by discussing required information by TRIM of millage and rollback rate, review any new information since the workshop and discuss any open items. A millage rate is a tax rate used to calculate property taxes representing the amount of tax per 1,000 taxable property values. The city's proposed operating millage rate is 6.0018 mils and remained the same since 2020. The city also received voted debt millage to cover the debt service associated with 2012 B general obligation bonds. Two remaining GOB bonds combined millage decreased by .0122 mils for FY 2026. Therefore, the total proposed millage rate for the city is 6.1729 mils compared to 6.1851 mils in the prior year. Based on this information, the city will collect property taxes of 69.5 million for the general fund. This includes delinquent 1.3 million dollars taxes. Additionally, the operating millage rate of 6.0018 mils is 7.59% more than the rollback rate of 5.5786 mils calculated pursuant to state law. The reasons for the increase is continuous increase in public safety, personnel benefits, insurance and operating costs, as well as capital purchases for services provided to our residents. This slide shows an average property tax on a condo and single family owner. Average value in Broward County, as you can see, is higher than within the city of Deerfield Beach. And for the commissioners, the information was adjusted on this slide. We've noticed a last minute arrow in the formula. So you'll see slightly different information on the screen versus the package you received. Next slide indicates a millage breakdown within the Broward County as of current year. 30.44% of an average tax bill is for the city. The rest are for various other government entities. You can see them listed on the screen, largest being for Broward County schools. Now, the next slide, you've seen this slide before. I'm going to provide an update on changes from the time that we presented this at the workshop. The slide again shows changes between current year 2025 amended budget and 2026 proposed. Proposed 2026 budget shows a decrease of 63.6 million compared to last year. Main changes are since the budget workshop, in general fund, increase of 1.1 million dollars, added additional funds for new estimates for water and sewer utility services, two positions added for better accountability monitoring, additional costs to support debt service fund, and also includes estimated carryovers. With debt service fund increase of 1.22 million, it was a result of additional amortization cost. General construction bond funds increased by 633,000 was due to carry forward a bond proceeds from parks improvements. Again, the overall budget reflects a decrease of 63.6 million as the city undergone three rounds of lean budgeting review in which projects were reviewed for its priority for the public and city and items that have been funding identified for. This slide shows the changes in personnel. From 2025 to 2026, there is an increase of two full-time positions and there are four part-time positions that were decreased or eliminated. In total, there is no changes to overall number of employees proposed within the city for 2026. As we discussed at the workshop, main changes were within the park, recreation area, environmental services and municipal services, all results of the ORCHAR changes for the creation of municipal services department. Next slide represents the general fund revenue sources. By far, the largest revenue source in general fund is from the property taxes, 41%. Utility services taxes is at 7%. This is again tax levied for natural gas, petroleum, electric, water and fuel oil. Franchise fees is 5% and these are charges for services provided within the city. Special assessment is 10% and it's a fire rescue assessment fee. Charges for services at 6% and these are ambulance services, parking fees and other program activities. Okay. This is a continuation of previous slide indicating changes in dollars. Again, main increase is within the property taxes. You could see the 4.8 million dollars increase or 7% from year 25 to 26. As we move to the next slide, you can see that a significant portion of general fund expenditures is for the BSO services, which is 45%. Personnel services is the next largest category, 21% and is aligned with the industry standards. All right, let's talk about now fire assessment fees. These slides include additional information compared to what was presented at the workshop. As we discussed before, the fire rescue assessment fee is a non-adrom special tax assessment that is levied against all assessed residential and non-residential properties within the city. Although history, in the fiscal year 2019, a full study of the city fire assessment rates was conducted to determine the adequacy of the city's fire assessment rates. It was determined that the previous fire assessment charges to property owners was not covering all accessible costs to provide fire protection services. At that time, the city commission adopted a fire rescue assessment rate of 235 dollars per residential dwelling for fiscal year 2020 and remained for 21 and the fiscal year 2022. During fiscal year 2022, a full updated study of the city fire assessment rates was conducted to determine the adequacy of the city fire assessment rate. It was determined at the time that the previous fire assessment rate charges to property owners still did not cover all the accessible costs to provide the fire protection services. Per study, based on 100% funding of projected five-year average accessible cost at 2022 rates, the residential rate would be 372 dollars for residential dwelling. The current adopted fire assessment rate is 315. And based on 2022 average accessible cost, this captures approximately 84.75% of allowable cost. And you could see that on the slide that's presented. At the July 8, 2025 commission meeting, the commissioners approved a preliminary assessment rate of 365 per residential dwelling unit as the established rate for advertising of the TRIM notice. That would be the maximum rate that could be adopted at the final fire assessment rate. This is why you do not have any higher rates listed on the schedule above 365. If the commission wants to see any other scenarios not listed above, we can definitely entertain that or get that information certainly for you to make a decision on. So if you look at the slide itself, various rates, rate of 325 would generate a funding of accessible cost at 87.25%. 340 and 91.25 and moving forward to 365 will generate 98%. So all the various options are given there to make a determination. As you recall, the workshop, a special emphasis were given to discussing details of proposed capital projects for 2026 budget year. Following slides providing information for Flier Plan, which as we know, following four years, anticipated projects will change as more changes from the state and federal government becomes available and the city needs are reassessed. Next slide discusses the general fund, general capital fund. General capital fund represents 52% of overall CIP funding over the next five years. A total of 35 general fund projects have been identified. New infrastructure projects totaling 19.5 million and 2.8 million dollars in equipment and fleet replacements have been scheduled for 2026. For utility capital fund, the utility capital fund represents 33% of the total 26 to FY 30 CIP plan. The funding is primarily for ongoing rehabilitation of the city's water plant and other facilities. The utilities fund had 10 infrastructure projects identified for 2630, a total of 14.6 million dollars scheduled for FY 2026. On the solid waste, solid waste overall represents 6% of the total 2630 CIP plan. The solid waste fund has four projects identified for 26 and 30 with 449,000 dollars expected to be expensed in 2026. And now finally, the stormwater capital fund represent 3.4% of 26 to 30 CIP plan and stormwater has four infrastructure projects identified, a total of 6.6 million dollars for 26. I wanted to make sure that we were very explicit what we show for the CIP fleet and equipment purchases or needs for 2026. As the procurement time comes, this slide becomes very essential. The fleet and equipment needs are summarized for 2026 and you can go through details of that. I tried to be fast. So in conclusion, I want to say a special thank you to you. Thank you to the city's budget team and overall financial division, city manager, all departments that were engaged in helping us finalize this information. I'm also very much grateful to the commissioners for their engagement in this process from meeting with us, relating their constituents' concerns and recommendations, as well as bringing their own ideas to improve the city's budget and overall financial position. Thank you and the city manager, myself and department heads will be ready to answer your questions whenever you're ready.
Ole, thank you very much for the presentation. I know this was a continuation from the workshop that we had, so it all fits together. I'm not sure who was first. Commissioner Houdak?
If you could go to slide four, please. This is an extremely important slide that I want the residents to look at. We'll be doing, you know, ad valorem taxes are coming up and I'll talk about them during my comments. But what, why I wanted to just focus on this slide is, is again, your millage rate as it relates to the city. So the city only receives 30.4% of the entire millage rate. So if the school board raises their millage rate, your taxes go up. If Broward County raises their millage rate, your taxes go up. This is extremely important. As I said earlier, Broward County receives 28% of your millage rate. The school board, 32% of your millage rate. The school board actually receives more money from your taxes than the city of Deerfield Beach. So I just want everybody to really understand that. So if you get, you know, your taxes and you look at it and you say, why did my taxes go up? The city is doing this and the city is doing that. You know, as was stated earlier, the city has not increased your millage rate since 20, what was it, 2020?
20.
Since 2020. So if your taxes have gone up, A, the value of your property has gone up and we could talk about the 3% cap when you're homesteaded or the 10% cap. But, you know, I think it was the last, last November election when residents approved a school board millage rate increase. And then they were all up in arms when their taxes went up. And that's because it was due to the school board increasing their millage, not the city of Deerfield Beach. So if your taxes do go up, make sure you look at that, you know, that, that ad valorem letter that you received from the property tax appraiser. And I'll talk a little bit later at the end about ways that you can actually possibly, you know, appeal and get your taxes lowered. If we could go to the fire assessment, slide next, which I think is slide 10. Thank you very much. At least in this slide, yeah. My, my question is with regards to the BSO fire contract and assessment. You've got the 39.5 million dollars. Is that for what we budgeted for? Or is that for the rate that they presented to us in the latest?
To answer, Commissioner, this question is both. It's the rate proposed and the current budget does include the worst possible scenario.
Okay, so this is the actual worst case scenario.
Yes, sir.
This 39.5 because we had originally budgeted around 37 million.
Yes, sir.
Okay, because that, again, the fire assessment fee has got to keep up with this stuff. So if our original budget was 37 million and now it's 39.5 million, that's going to adjust our position with regards to the fire assessment fee. And I think I had one more point. Oh, slide 15. Here we go. The Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue Stormwater Improvement. I'm not sure if it was that project or the stormwater college project, capital improvement project, but one of them, we were able to reduce the costs significantly due to some, some re-engineering. So I'm just curious, has that been reflected in this slide?
I probably will have to defer to my colleagues.
And I believe it is, Eric, that one is the one where we reduced the capital cost, right? Yes. Thank you very much. And that's all I have, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Houdak. Commissioner Preston, you are next, Madam Clerk. In the meantime, just, you mind leaving the presentation up? I think we're all going to refer to it, so thank you. Vice Mayor Preston?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Can we go to, I don't know what slide would coincide with page nine? It's the general fund major revenues. Okay, all right, thank you. So, so trying to understand this, in FY 25, we received 64 million and in the proposed for 26 is basically 5 million dollars more, is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
Okay, so now at the bottom, there's an asterisk saying that the ad valorem tax revenue projection includes. Tell me about the delinquent taxes of the 1.3 million.
Right, that's the properties that are in arrears of paying their taxes and then the city collects that money for the prior years. The 1.3 million dollars essentially is the amount that we estimate. We do not know exactly what that amount will be when the year is over.
And that's of unpaid taxes?
That's correct, sir.
Okay, and how then does that, those numbers affect the total budget for us?
Well, right now, this, this amount is figured out into the total revenue for the city. So it's already incorporated in the budget.
It's already incorporated?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, but it, but it's money we don't have and these are just basically delinquent taxes.
That's correct.
So.
The best guess estimate that's going to be 1.3 million dollars based on the history.
And if it's delinquent, there is little hope of getting that money, correct?
Actually, we do anticipate to get this.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
And just one more correction, on FY twenty-five budget, sixty-four point seven million dollars, that's a budgeted amount again, that's not the actual revenue collected yet.
Okay.
The year is not over, so we cannot confirm exactly what that amount will be.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Shonitzki?
All right, so basically what you're saying is, basically, the budget has been cut sixty million dollars from last year, the prior year, right? Where we cut it sixty million dollars in the budget. That's what I'm picking up, correct?
Compared to the last year, the budget is reduced by sixty million, over sixty million dollars, yes, sir.
Very admirable. And also you're saying that the millage rate is basically staying the same, staying the same, even though expenses have gone up.
Correct, Commissioner. The operating millage stays the same. The general obligation bond millage actually is decreasing going into next year.
That's very admirable. And you're also saying, I guess, that they are, are bond rating double A, the highest we could have.
Double A plus, sir.
Double A plus is the highest we could have it. That's very admirable, too. I have some questions. In terms of the personnel, I know that there were some positions that, I don't know, were eliminated. I just want to know are they being factored in, like for instance, the assistant, the assistant city manager or director of environmental services? Is that factored in? Would that, was that cut? Will that be put back at a later time?
I believe the environmental services position still remains. It was in the budget and there's ongoing recruitment is going on right now. I'm not sure about the other position.
Okay. And my other question is, I, I know they had discussed with parks, like Tam O Shantha Park, which is in my district. I'd asked about that and I was told that there's a fifty-year master park plan that is going to be implemented or a study done on that to tell what will happen to the different parks in Deerfield Beach. I didn't see that in the budget. I wanted to ask that during the workshop and I, I didn't know to ask it, but I'm asking it now. Is it, is that implemented at all, a fifty-year master park plan for Deerfield Beach?
Yeah, we do have that and I'm gonna have Greg also answer that to give you more detail, but that is part of the budgeted plan.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the commission, for the record Greg Warner, Director of Parks and Recreation. The Parks and Recreation Master Plan, it's a ten-to-fifteen-year plan, planning document that is budgeted in the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five budget, this current fiscal year, that is underway. And you'll be seeing more activity on that shortly.
Anything else, Commissioner, right now? Commissioner Plow?
Thank you, Mayor. Quick question, sir. We are very proud that the city's operating millage rate has stayed the same for seven consecutive years. So that's, that's, that's quite an accomplishment. But we also have a small voted mil, debt millage, okay? So that for the public's knowledge is, is a millage rate that's added to the millage rate that we haven't changed, the six point oh oh one eight.
Correct.
Because that's the money that we need to service the debt. In other words, money we borrowed, so we're making payments on that.
That's correct, sir.
Okay, so that, that's based on a couple of bonds, astonishingly, one that's twenty-five years old. So perhaps if you could tell the public when they might see some release, relief from the voted debt millage, when, when might that disappear?
So I, I don't have the details of it in front of me, but I believe the one from two thousand, we have about two more years remaining on it. And the one from two thousand twelve, we have about three to four years remaining, sir.
Okay.
So after that, and as you remember, the presentation that was done during the workshop, the primary drop in our debt is expected to be by year twenty thirty, if I'm not mistaken, from the slides presented by Davenport back in July ninth.
And I'm sure we'll probably have to take on some other debt for, for different reasons.
That's all up to your guidance.
That's nice. I, I'd just like to get debt that old off the books and so that's, that's great.
So do I, sir. And I'm sure every resident too.
Anything else, Commissioner Plow?
That's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, no problem. Madam Clerk, if you could go to slide, it's five in my packet. That's it. Perfect. So Commissioner Hudak, you touched on it. I just wanted to point out that, you know, everyone gets their tax bill and everybody thinks it's the city of Deerfield Beach, the city of Deerfield Beach. And yes, part of that is the city of Deerfield Beach, it's thirty percent. But the other entities that go into your tax bill that you receive are the school board, Broward County, the Children's Services Council, the Florida Inland Navigation District, North Broward Hospital, and the South Florida Water Management. All of those entities are taxing authorities that go into your number that you get for your ad valorem taxes. So you cannot make the sweeping assumption that the number that you have is all attributable, all attributable to the city of Deerfield Beach, because it's most certainly not. We are only responsible for thirty point four four percent of the total tax bill that you received. Now, if you could go to slide nine, please? And Oleg, I apologize for this, because I didn't, I didn't think of this until tonight, because I don't remember the asterisks being part of the budget workshop. And it was, if it was there, I, I apologize, but if not, this is the, this is the discussion I, I'd like to have with you. So in twenty twenty-five, I, I want to go with the top line, the ad valorem taxes, the top line going across. So in fiscal year twenty twenty-five, the ad valorem taxes were sixty-four point seven million. The proposed for fiscal year twenty-six is sixty-nine point four million, meaning a difference of four point seven million or a seven percent change. So the four point seven million is four point seven additional money that we have to do something within our budget, is the easiest way that I, that I could put it, because property values have increased. Everybody's getting taxed at a certain rate, but because your property values are going up, that's additional revenue to all the taxing authorities into the city of Deerfield Beach, that's four point seven million dollars. It's seven, so it's a seven percent increase. So in theory, the, the commission has seven percent more of just the ad valorem tax line to do more with in this particular fiscal year. The first question I have for you is the asterisk has me very interested, because you're saying that the one point three million of delinquent taxes is included in the tax revenue projection. So are you saying that of the sixty-nine point four million, one point three of that is for delinquent taxes?
That's correct.
So really, if I do the math, so then it's really, it's, if I were to subtract one point three million from the sixty-nine point four million, that is really sixty-eight point one million. So you can't include one point three million as new money, because that's not new money. It's money that should have been paid in prior tax years, but were not for whatever reasons by home, by homeowners. And, and again, this is not, this is nothing unique. This is nothing that is out of the ordinary. I mean, delinquent taxes get paid every year. So this is not something, this is not a new concept. But if I were to subtract the one point three million out of there, because it's not new money, it's really sixty-eight point one million. So that seven percent is really probably, now that number I can't do in my head, but that's probably closer to what, five percent? Change, if I were to take that out, plus or minus?
The, the only additional information I can provide you is sixty-four point seven million dollars for the current year twenty-five includes one point one million dollars in delinquent taxes. So we are comparing apples to apples when it gets to both amount. There is a difference. We expect slight increase from one point one to one point three, but the both amounts include delinquent taxes in it.
Okay, but I mean, the one point three isn't anything new for, it's not, it's not a result of increased property values. It's a result of delinquent taxes being collected that just weren't paid before.
Yes, sir.
So then, so the seven percent is a little, in that regard, I see where you're doing the raw numbers, but in that, when you kind of break it down, get a little more granular, I think that's a little, there's an explanation that that's actually not in reality, you know, the, the number there. So we really have four point, either way you look at it, we have four point seven million to do additional items with. And when I went through this budget in your presentation and the budget workshop, we have a lot of new categories. We have, insurance has gone up, the personnel costs have, have gone up. And then, most importantly, you have the uncertainty with our police and fire contracts going forward. So that four point seven million gets eaten up pretty quickly going, going forward. So any notion of, of refunding something back to the taxpayers when we have all these uncertainties, I, I, I think is not going to be very sustainable, because we have all these additional expenses that have gone up, like everybody else, like your personal finances, your insurance has gone up, your groceries have gone up, your gas has gone up. Well, those, all those items have gone up for the city as, as well, that we have to pay for going forward. So as much as I would like to give the taxpayer some relief, I think with the price increases and the uncertainty going forward, I, I just don't see where they would be fiscally responsible to do that in this particular, in this particular year. So I, I wanted to bring those two particular items up. And then, Madam Clerk, bear with me, with respect to slide, I have it as slide eleven? I know Commissioner Hudak has, was off.
Yeah, I was using the one they, they gave me at home.
No worries, but with respect to the fire assessment fee, again, we're using on, if you look at the second line going across, the BSO fire contract number, they have put in for thirty-nine point five million on that particular line there. So it's just depending on how much of that amount do we want to cover? You can go anywhere from, we're, we're at three hundred and fifteen dollars now. If you see where the bold dark line is in that box, they, they give us options of three twenty-five, three forty, three forty-seven, three fifty, and three sixty-five. And then the, the bottom line of that box is the percentages of how much we cover those expenses. So if we were to pick three twenty-five, we would be covering eighty-seven point two five percent of the fire assessment costs. Otherwise, the three hundred and sixty-five number going all the way across covers ninety-eight percent. So it's just how much of that delta does the commission want to leave on the, on the table is a discussion that we, that we need to have. So those were my, my notes going forward. Thank you very much. Take a, take a seat. Don't go too far, because we're gonna open it to the public right now.
Yes, sir.
And then my colleagues may have some questions for you when we, when we come back. Mr. City Attorney, is it okay if I open it for four, five, and six? No reason why not, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, you need to have a public hearing.
I know, I know we have to have the public hearing, yes. So we're gonna do it on items four, five, and six. Anyone from the public, let's start with those in the commission chamber that have signed up first. Madam Clerk, no one signed up first, okay? So is there anyone in the commission chamber that would like to speak on items four, five, or six? Come forward. Ms. Berners, you want to speak? Four, five, even though you didn't, four, five, or six? Anyone in the commission chamber? All right, there's not a mad rush. How about online, Madam Clerk? Okay, let's start with Dan Hirsch then.
Dan Hirsch, three thirty, Southeast Nineteenth Avenue. I just want to remind.
It's a little difficult to hear you. Could you speak a little closer to the, the microphone, please?
Yes, is this any better?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I hope the three-minute clock didn't start ticking yet. I just want to remind the city attorney that if the city does not open up the floor before the separate vote on items four, five, and six for public comment, the city will be violating the law and also going against a precedent that has existed for years. When discussing approval of this fiscal twenty-six budget, it is necessary to review a financial event that just occurred in the city. Only a few weeks ago, five major banks all wanted to loan Deerfield Beach almost six million dollars payable over five years. As an ex-banker, I can assure you the banks did a tremendous amount of analysis of the city's financial strength before committing to lend six million. None of the five banks that made financing commitments for the almost six million loan request from the city inquired anything at all about the city's written ten percent reserve requirements of the general fund, and none of the banks said the ten percent reserve balance was too low. The reason this recent loan information is so important is because Rodney Brimelow at the July ninth budget workshop kept insisting that our general reserves were way too low and we had to raise reserves equal to thirty percent of the general fund. Our general fund balance at the end of fiscal twenty-four was a hundred and forty million. So a ten percent reserve requirement would be fourteen million. However, the city has thirty-one million in reserves at the end of fiscal twenty-four, seventeen million more than the minimum required. So when you hear Rodney Brimelow say that there is no way the city can pay for the increased BSO costs in their new contract proposal without raising fire assessment fees and the millage rate, just remember this extra seventeen million sitting in reserves, that all of a sudden, the city manager, with no previous experience whatsoever in being a city manager, says our reserves are insufficient, even though we just had five big banks bending over backwards to lend the city almost six million with only a ten percent reserve requirement. And don't forget Rodney Brimelow also wants to raise the hurricane emergency fund by fifty percent or two point five million per year, with the explanation from Oleg, we need to be more prudent and proactive in case something happens in the future. This reminds me of good old Commissioner Parnas, who every year this time of year would say, we need more reserves. There's two hurricanes spinning out in the Atlantic Ocean. Please Rodney, we all know the real reason why you want to triple the reserve requirement to get rid of BSO and help fund the startup costs of bringing public safety in-house. Keep in mind, no matter what Commissioner Hudak says, the city is raising property.
Wind it down, please. The three minutes are up, but wind it down, please.
Well, I'd like a ruling from the city attorney, please.
I'm not sure what you're looking for a ruling for, but I ultimately answered the commission, so however you all want me to hear, handle it. The statute provides for a public hearing, a public hearing, on the tentative budget and proposed millage rate at first reading. So it's up to the commission, however you want to handle it.
I'll let Mr. Hirsch finish his thought. Good Mr. Hirsch, Madam Clerk, give him one more minute, please. We'll do, because there's three items tonight, we'll do, we'll do four minutes.
Okay, in the one minute that I'm being so nicely granted, I will say Rodney Brimelow's plan all along was to not lower the operating millage rate despite the extra thirteen million left over from the fiscal twenty-four budget and the windfall received from the federal government, which was twenty-three million dollars. Brimelow needs all the extra money he can gather to help pay for the initial startup costs of bringing public safety in-house and getting rid of BSO. As you will hear, Brimelow is manipulating the city's decades-old operating reserve policies in order to hide his true intention for the use of these extra savings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hirsch. Madam Clerk, anyone else online? Okay, Mr. Callen, go ahead.
Dean Callen, thirty-two fifty Southwest Second Court. Just wanted to bring attention to something that was said by you, Mr. Mayor, as well as the, our, our property values are going up. And just like everything else, our prices are going up on everything under the sun. But please, you know, tread on this lightly, because although our property values are going up, it doesn't mean that's cash accessible to us. And that's an important thing. We're paying more money out for someone's opinion on what our taxes should be based on by, you know, creating a value. I learned in life that when you buy something, that's what it's worth. But yet we're constantly getting taxed more and more for money that we do not have. And there's a, a large segment of our community that is living basically week to week or day to day. We have to be cautious for them as well, making sure that we're doing everything to keep our costs down, such as in the variance for the fire department, a very pro-fire and police, don't get me wrong. But if we can keep it to a minimum, then we should, and we should take the concern of the, the residents here that have to foot every bill here and really lean on the side of caution for them. Because I know when my house value goes up, I don't see any more in my bank account, because someone says my value is up to whatever. So please just lean on the side of caution for that in making your decisions going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Callen. Madam Clerk, who's next? Okay, nobody else online? Anyone in the commission chamber will come back here. Anyone for items four, five, or six? Okay, we're gonna close the public hearing on items four, five, and six. Oleg, you're off the hook for the moment. I don't see any rights for my colleagues. I just want to remind my colleagues that item four requires a four-fifths vote and the other two items will be three-fifths.
That's right. And just for, just for clarification, the four-fifths is required for adoption. So tonight, to move forward, you, you need three votes. But the, the mayor is right, with respect to second reading, the millage rate that's being proposed will require four fifths at the next meeting.
Motion to approve item four.
Second.
Second.
Motion to approve item number four only by Commissioner Houdak, seconded by Vice Mayor Preston. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Houdak?
Yes.
Commissioner Plout?
Yes.
Commissioner Shanetsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Preston?
Yes.
Mayor Droski?
Yes.
Motion to approve item five.
Second.
Motion to approve item number five only by Commissioner Houdak, seconded by Vice Mayor Preston. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Houdak?
Yes.
Commissioner Plout?
Yes.
Commissioner Shanetsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Preston?
Yes.
Mayor Droski?
Yes.
Motion to approve item six.
Second.
Motion to approve item number six only by Commissioner Houdak, seconded by Vice Mayor Preston. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Houdak?
Yes.
Commissioner Plout?
Yes.
Commissioner Shanetsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Preston?
Yes.
Mayor Droski?
Yes.
Item number seven, I'm not sure if they're going to be presented together. I'm going to read them in the record just in case. Item six and seven and eight relate to FRS. Their second reading ordinances. Item number seven is an ordinance to the city commission of the city of Deerfield Beach, Florida, relating to membership in the Florida retirement system, FRS, declaring the intent to extend to the police officers of the city the benefits of the Florida retirement system as of October one, twenty twenty five, specifying the employees eligible for participation in FRS, approving and authorizing execution of an agreement with the Division of Retirement for Participation in FRS, providing for implementation, severability, conflicts and an effective date. Item number eight is in order to the city commission of the city of Deerfield Beach, Florida, relating to membership in the Florida retirement system, FRS, declaring the intent to extend to the firefighters of the city the benefits of the Florida retirement system as of October one, twenty twenty five, specifying the employees eligible for participation in FRS, approving and authorizing execution of an agreement with the Division of Retirement for Participation in FRS, providing for implementation, severability, conflicts and an effective date. These are both second reading. At the prior reading, at the last meeting, there were some inquiries about potential impacts of FRS on certain firefighter, I believe it was focused more towards firefighters. So I do have my law partner online who's called in Milton Collins, who you all know who does most of the labor work for the city through my firm. And he's available to answer questions in case you have any questions regarding that.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Mr. City Attorney? Are you handling this or is Mr. Gladio?
We can have Mr. Gladio can come down. He can give you the information about the breakdown of our original hires for Deerfield Beach.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners and Mr. City Manager Sean Gladio, Director of the Office of Public Safety for the record. This evening I come before the commission to present information relating to membership in the Florida retirement system or FRS. Based on municipal pension numbers, our current municipal plan participants on the law enforcement side of the house is sixty eight. If the commission votes their intent to extend to the law enforcement officers of the city the benefits of the Florida retirement system, none, absolutely zero of the sixty eight participants would be impacted in any way. Can we do the fire side too?
Might as well. Yes, please.
Okay. Based on municipal pension numbers, our current municipal plan participants on the fire rescue side of the house is one hundred and ninety three. If the commission votes their intent to extend to fire rescue personnel of the city the benefits of the Florida retirement system, one hundred and fifty six retirees currently collecting benefits would not be impacted in any way. The only members who could potentially be impacted are the twenty five active fire personnel and the twelve fire rescue personnel who are currently in the drop or the deferred retirement option program. There will be an audited filing on September thirtieth, twenty twenty five, which will provide us with the most updated information. And at this time, I would like to yield to Mr. City Attorney or his colleague to provide any more context to the two categories of the potentially affected personnel.
Sure. I don't know if the commission has any specific questions you want to ask myself or my law partner, Mr. Collins, but we discussed last time generally three categories of, I think we were focused on firefighters at the time, but but those that are retired, those that are in drop and those that are currently active. And so myself and Mr. Collins are here to discuss any questions you have regarding any impacts. Keep in mind, just by approving this ordinance, I think you're you're opening the option. And it's my understanding and Mr. Collins will correct me if he sees it differently, but just by approving this ordinance, that in that sole act in and of itself has no impact on any of these individuals. If we start enrolling future firefighters in FRS, you know, that that's where impacts begin to be triggered. So I just wanted to point that out.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, Commissioner, Commissioners, Mr. City Attorney. Yes, the gentlemen that did speak are correct. The members will not be adversely impacted at this juncture regarding FRS. And your decision here tonight, of course, will not trigger the city's FRS participation right now. There's sort of a long road before we get there. So I just wanted to make sure that is stated for the record.
Thank you, Milton. Appreciate that. Commissioner Plout?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Gladio hit it on the head for me because I was I was questioning what about the folks in drop? I'm familiar with that. The deferred retirement option program. So the police aren't affected at all? Is that is that just because there just happens to be none of that those folks in drop?
Well, the police aren't affected because that that municipal pension plan has been closed for probably close to fourteen years now.
Oh, okay, okay.
Thank you. You're very welcome.
Vice Mayor Preston?
Yes, thank you. So, Mr. City Attorney, what are going to be the primary differences when we talk about the FRS opposed to the plan that a lot of the firefighters are in now? Is there going to be a conflict with the FRS opposed to the pension they have now?
Mr. Collins, you want to take that or you want me to to do so? I think the vice mayor is asking for the difference between the current benefits that they have now and then what if those firefighters were were ultimately to be employed by the city at some point?
That's right.
What would the what would the difference be?
Correct.
Right. And I think as part of that question, you know, there's a presumption too, because theoretically, there's certain actions that the commission could take also in the future to mitigate any potential impacts. So I'll just I'll put that out there, but Milton, can you go ahead and answer that one?
Yes, there wouldn't be any sort of direct conflict. I mean, at this juncture, we're not quite sure of how the pension plan will proceed going forward. But yes, the two plans can coexist without conflicting with each other.
And so let me ask you this. By approving this, is it also a first move into transitioning all of our employees to the FRS?
That's certainly not the direction that was given to me as I prepared the ordinance.
Okay, yeah. Okay.
That was not the direction.
So so this is just for the police and fire?
That's correct. It's for police and fire.
Okay, so let me ask you this. Would we potentially go down that road of of trying to transition everybody into one plan, that being the FRS?
That would be at the direction of the commission.
Yeah. Milton and I are on the same page there. You just said it before me and the manager. That's ultimately going to be your decision.
Okay.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Shanetsky?
So the way I look at this, this is like an insurance program, an insurance thing. It's like when you're driving your car, you don't expect to crash into somebody, but you have the insurance just in case you do or somebody crashes into you. I understand that. But you know, we're talking about a transition program, a transition period, I'm sorry. And I I'm asking, my question is, what is the rush to have this now? Should we wait? Shouldn't we wait till that quote transition period? When we know what direction we're going into? Shouldn't we? We're still in negotiation right now. I mean, I'm looking at the big picture and I'm saying to myself thirty five years ago in nineteen ninety, there was a reason why and we only had forty five thousand people in Deerfield Beach. There was a reason why we transitioned to BSO. And until a study is out and we really know all the facts and all the avenues, or at least look at the study from Pompano Beach, our big sister city, we need to get more information. Or fourteen years ago, when the fire department, they left and they went to BSO, there's a reason why. So I think we need more information. I'm asking why? Why is there a rush right now to go into this? I think we should still work on negotiation. And then if we do go into the transition period in April, twenty twenty six, then we can go full tilt and we can do this. But right now I'm asking, what is the rush? Why do we have to have this right now? That's that's my question. I do respect what my brethren and these are my brethren, all of us. I do respect what they're doing. But I'm also saying, what is the rush right now?
Any of my colleagues would like to speak?
Is he talking to the?
City manager, did you want to take a shot? If not, I'll jump in.
I would say that the transition period begins October first. And if the if it is a transition period to fully accommodate whatever the outcomes may eventually be from the city, the city would be best poised to have all options on the table. And this allows for all options to be on the table. If, you know, the time would be of the essence, no matter what the decision is, and none of this impacts current employees that are providing police and fire services right now. And also it allows for the greatest flexibility for any decisions that are made by the commission at a future date. But the important thing is it doesn't negatively impact any of the current first responders providing any services to our city at this time.
Commissioner Houdak?
Just because we make a decision now doesn't mean that all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed. There's still a bunch of hoops that we have to go through to even get this program off the road. So as far as I understand. So I I don't see what the the challenge is is to to at least move this forward. If we stay with BSO like, you know, we hope, then this doesn't even get activated. It just sits on a shelf. If if we go in a different direction, at least it's it's an opportunity. It's it's something that we have. But it's not like, oh, if we make a decision today, there it's there. There's still, you know, a lot of things that that we have to go through that the attorneys will have to comply with in order to move the program forward anyway.
I I concur with Commissioner Houdak. I mean, if we move forward, I mean, it's going, you know, two years will go fast, Commissioner Shanetsky. It will go very fast. And so there's a lot of hoops that we have to jump through. There's a lot of hurdles that we have to do. There's a lot of implementation and this is one item here that it's best to get it out of the way now. And as Commissioner Houdak stated, if we come to an agreement, then this is this is all moot. But if we don't, then we certainly need this to go forward. And and like I said, the very beginning, we are serious about the in-house option. I kid you not. And so this is something that we need to move forward and we need to move forward and our residents want to see us make that this commission is taking action and not sitting on its hands. So and again, if it if it becomes moot, so be it. But our residents are demanding that this commission act. Commissioner Plout?
Super quick. I think it also goes with the psychological part of a decision of somebody that might consider working for us that would have a similar plan. The first thing that they would want to know if they changed their job is what happens to my pension? And the federal government did solve that problem many years ago by providing that people that worked at a job that had a 401K, which is a retirement program at a corporation where people put money in away for their retirement and then their corporation matches it, usually a three percent match that when they retired, they wouldn't be taxed to death on it. They could roll it over to a traditional IRA. And so there should be a plan in place. It's a building block of where we might go. And that building block would provide the the very foundation that we need to show that working for us would be a viable option for those folks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Plout, we do have two items, seven and eight, which have to be voted on separately. But before we do, we'll open it to the public. Madam Clerk, did anyone sign up? Howard Nolan's first. Is anyone else sign up that's on deck? Go down, Mr. Nolan.
Howard Nolan, I was an employee of the city of Deerfield Beach for twenty seven and a half years. When we merged with the Broward Sheriff's Office, I became a Broward Sheriff's Office employee. And I was in the drop plan. So I immediately could go into FRS. When you're in the drop plan, you're considered to be retired by the state of Florida. Now we have two different opinions here by the city manager and our PIO director. The city manager saying nobody's going to be affected. And we got the PIO director saying the guys that haven't calculated their pensions yet are going to be infected. The people in the drop plan. If if this, if we're going to vote on this, we need to have a clarification because we got one guy saying one thing. We got another guy saying another thing. And what is it? There's there's twenty five people that haven't calculated their pensions yet in the Deerfield Beach pension. The municipal pension. So if we have twenty five people still in that plan, why are we starting a new plan? We have a plan. Why wouldn't we? If we're going to hire new firefighters, the city of Deerfield Beach has a pension plan. There's twenty five people that haven't calculated their pensions yet. And from what I heard here tonight, it's not going to affect anybody. And it's going to affect the twenty five people. So I think we need to all get on the same page. These twenty five people that haven't calculated their pensions yet that were promised their pensions in two thousand and eleven when we merged should still be promised their pensions. And we shouldn't be talking about it's going to affect him and it's not going to affect him. If they're in the pension, they're in the pension. Sounds like we're closing it out almost and we're not going to be able to let those guys go forward, get into the drop plan and then go into FRS. But, you know, we've heard two different opinions here tonight. I think we need some clarification to the commission. That it's either going to affect those twenty five people or it's not going to affect those twenty five people. And I think that's very important before we vote on getting rid of the Deerfield Municipal Plan that still has twenty five people in it. Why are we talking about FRS? We have a pension plan. The cops are done. All the cops are gone from nineteen ninety. But the firefighters merged in two thousand and eleven. And there's still fifteen guys that haven't calculated their pensions yet because they were eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty one, twenty two when they got hired. They've been in a pension plan for fifteen years now with the Broward Sheriff's Office. They're still in the Deerfield Municipal Pension Plan. But Sean's telling us they're going to be affected. Rodney's telling us they're not. I'd like to answer that question before we do any kind of voting.
Thank you, Mr. Nolan. Madam Clerk, who's next? Okay, anyone in the commission chamber like to speak this evening?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commissioners and residents of Deerfield Beach. My name is Steve Bertuccio and I'm proud to serve as president of IFF Local four, three, two, one, representing nearly eight hundred men and women of BSO Fire Rescue. I was hired here in Deerfield Beach in nineteen ninety nine. I was young then and new to the business side. But I was proud to wear the uniform and serve this community. Several years after, I was part of the merger with BSO. Since then, I was I seen firsthand how our members have grown and have success during that transition. Excuse me. During these negotiations that are currently going on, it can be challenging and emotions sometimes get involved. But what unites us is stronger than any challenge. And that is our commitment to the safety and well-being of every resident, business and Deerfield Beach. It is also important to recognize that starting a standalone fire department and or police department is extremely expensive with many unforeseen costs that could place a burden on the city and its taxpayers. We truly enjoy serving this community. Every alarm, every emergency, every moment, we respond with professionalism, pride and compassion. The bond between this city and the Broward Sheriff's Office is something special and it deserves to continue. On behalf of my nearly eight hundred members, I want you to know we're committed to Deerfield Beach. We are proud of the work we do and we want nothing more than to keep serving this great city for many years to come. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bertuccio. Anyone else inside the commission chamber like to speak this evening on item seven? Madam Clerk, is there anyone online? Okay, Mr. Hers?
Thank you, Dan Hers, 330 Southeast 19th Avenue. Um, with all due respect to Attorney Milton, Attorney Anthony and Sean Gladio, who left the August 18th Fire Pension Board meeting before he had a chance to hear from their attorney. Their attorney is telling something quite different to what we heard tonight regarding the 25 active firefighters. Two of them spoke candidly on August 18th about how unfair this was to change their pension to potentially, excuse me, change their pension so many years into it. Now, if the city was able to get off the hook from having to pay the over $7 million a year that we've had to pay over each of the last three years to keep the fire pension actuarially sound, if we could get rid of that obligation by going to FRS, I'd be all for it. But unfortunately, I don't think that's the case. So you made a commitment to these 25 policemen, I'm sorry, firemen. And this is just another example of Rodney Brimlow bringing an ordinance to the city without the proper information, without consulting with the attorney for the retirement, uh, firefighters, who has a lot more information on this than anything I've heard so far from anybody tonight. And another example of Rodney Brimlow disrespecting the police and firefighters because of a personal grudge. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Anyone else online that would like to speak? Last call for in-house that would like to speak? Okay, so we're going to close the public hearing to item number seven this evening. Um, I guess before we move on, Vice Mayor Preston, you have your light on?
To the city attorney, we're not closing out any pension by this vote, are we?
No, that's not. My understanding is no. And I, I did want to point out, since it was mentioned, both Milton and I did confer, um, with the attorney for the fire pension. And my understanding, she agreed, I mean, you all can speak with her as well, that this ordinance, just adopting it in and of itself, doesn't impact those firefighter individuals that were spoken, that were spoken about before. If the city creates their own department, there may be impacts and starts enrolling people in FRS, there may be impacts. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Then those, at that point, those challenges would be in front of us, correct?
Right, you're gonna, there's going to be votes that you all would have to make before we get there. That's my understanding.
Right. Well, but I just want to make, I just want to make sure that our vote tonight does not squeeze out anybody or adversely put anybody at risk. Is, are we okay with that?
I think the vote tonight in and of itself, that is my understanding. Um, I would defer to Mr. Collins just because he's the pension, you know, he's my pension attorney. I'm not a pension expert. Um, but that's my understanding and what I believe I heard from, um, Ms. Levy when we spoke with her earlier today.
Is that the case, Milton? Milton?
Uh, yes, the vote tonight does not adversely affect any, any of the, uh, members.
Okay, thank you.
But yes.
And, and Vice Mayor, that was, um, probably why there sounded like there are two different answers. The answer I was giving was related to your vote tonight on the FRS that's before you. Uh, Mr. Gladio was talking about the future, if there is some, at some point where people are, uh, leaving BSO or they're coming back to work into the city, those 25 individuals. So that's why he's talking about the impact, the future impact that this commission would end up having to address as we get to that point, if that point ever comes. That point may never even come before this commission. Um, my point was what you're looking at today has no impact on those that are working today at BSO.
Well, even going forward, this commission may, has to make sure that, that anybody who is in a pension plan right now, that by a vote, does not put them, uh, at risk or put them in adverse situation for something that they've earned. Um, uh, that, that's where, um, okay. And if that's, that's the case, then okay.
Clarification is important and that, that's why, you know, there's not a difference between what we're saying. One thing we're talking about is passing the ordinance, a different situation. And it's something that the commission will have to address if that comes up. If that, if that comes up down the road, is how to manage those that are already, um, that the city has already made commitments to regarding their pension plans.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Houdak?
Uh, again, we're, we're talking about a, a future commission possibly making a decision. And there are tools available that make sure that these individuals are protected. Is there anything that we can put into this decision today that, that mandates that these tools are enacted or that they're at least looked at? Because it, it could be the same five of us, you know? Two of us are gone in, in a very short period of time. So it, it could be something that happens three or four or five years down the road. Who knows? But is there anything that we can put so that a future commission would have to abide by some kind of a rule?
I'm not sure about that because keep in mind, a future commission could amend the ordinance that you're going to pass tonight. Um, so I, I don't know exactly what you're looking for, but I would just throw that out to you. Just generally, when you pass an ordinance, right, in a couple of years, somebody else, some future commission could pass an ordinance repealing it or modifying, et cetera. Um, you know, so long as it's permitted by law, you know, their actions would be valid as well. As long as they're not doing anything contrary to law.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'll make a motion to approve item seven.
Motion to approve item number seven?
Second.
Uh, by Commissioner Houdak, second by Commissioner Plout. Uh, Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Houdak?
Yes.
Commissioner Plout?
Yes.
Commissioner Shunetsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Preston?
Yes.
Mayor Drowski?
Yes. Item number eight?
I'll make a, make a motion to approve item number eight.
Well, I think I need to, I only opened the public hearing with respect to number seven. So I want to be, I want to be safe, uh, and open it with respect to item number eight first, please. So Madam Clerk, did anyone sign up for number eight? Anyone in the commission chamber that would like to speak on item number eight? Is there anyone online that would like to speak to item number eight? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Hers.
Thank you, Dan Hers, 330 Southeast 19th Avenue. I have a potential answer to Commissioner Houdak's problem. If we just let any of those 25 affected go on to the city's 401K lucrative plan that gives an 8% uh, add-on to whatever their salary is going into their 401K for regular employees. And upper, upper management receives 13% add-on into their 401K. And Rodney Brimlow receives 15% add-on into his 401K. I don't see how any firefighter would have any problem with that because those benefits are more lucrative than anything they'll ever see in FRS. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there anyone else online? Last chance, anyone inside the commission chamber for item number eight? Otherwise, we're going to close the public hearing for item number eight. Uh, Commission?
Motion to approve item eight.
Second.
Motion to approve item number eight by Commissioner Houdak, second by Commissioner Plout. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Houdak?
Yes.
Commissioner Plout?
Yes.
Commissioner Shunetsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Preston?
Yes.
Mayor Drowski?
Yes. Uh, Mr. City Attorney, we're at public comment.
Just before public comment, um, Madam Clerk, can you pull up the, there was a Scrivener's error on the, one of the slides that I showed earlier? On this slide, this is the correct slide. If you look at, uh, the bottom, the fiscal year 25 and fiscal year 26, it's 32.4 to 34.1, um, which is the 1.7 million increase to 5.2%. On the, uh, error on the slide that was before, the 34.1 read 34.7, but it's actually 34.1. The rest of the numbers are the same. Just for clarification.
Okay, we're now at the public comment portion of tonight's meeting. Persons addressing the commission shall state his or her, her name and address and may speak for three minutes. This is the time for public comment on items that are not on tonight's agenda. The time for public comment on an item that is on tonight's agenda is after the title is written to the record for that item and the public comment period for that item is open. No comment shall be made related to the personal life or personal qualities of any person and no language which would offend persons of ordinary sensibilities shall be permitted.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Uh, Madam Clerk, I know we have some that signed up this evening. Could you give us the first two names, please? Ms. Burner, you up?
Good evening, everybody. Carol Burna, 3130 Cambridge F. Uh, the self-anointed flag queen is back because I spoke to you on this issue once before and you could have saved me through all this. Uh, Commissioner, did you think I could speak after the first 15 minutes with the presentations? I think you told me. Yeah. Anyhow, um, I want to let you know that I would have put this off, except 9/11 is going to be Thursday. And I, some of you know how much that means to me. As a matter of fact, there's a 9/11 commemorative flag at the firehouse at the beach because my girlfriend gave it to me and I gave it to them because they put their flag down on 9/11, which some other firehouses hadn't. And so that's why they actually received it. One of the things I found out, um, about the way you have your flags here and the way I feel it should be at that restaurant is they also have it exactly touching the American flag, their flag, which is also a no-no. That's not how, there's supposed to be space. And if you ever see the firehouse on Powell Line, you'll see that there's a, a state flag of Florida and then something else having to do with Florida and they are not touching. There's a separation. So if that could be put into a code. Now, how do I know there's no code for the flag? What happened was I saw all the flags were taken down at J&amp;J Farms. And I, you know, it used to be like the international pear, uh, pier that certainly former Mayor Nolan knows about. And, um, I went in there to find out why all the flags were gone. And I was told because one flag in particular had been torn down, desecrated, missing. And I think probably without telling you, you'll know which flag that was. So what she did was put all the flags down. You know that, right?
I'm guessing.
Okay, well, you're probably right. Uh, unfortunately. Um, so that's why I wanted to go see what the code was. And that's how I found out that there actually is no code for the flags. And I am really hoping that you would put in effect, which you can, a flag code. Oh, and by the way, this is the book that I had gotten the information out of that I brought to you the last time. It's a book all about the flag and all about the different, you know, ways you're supposed to respect the flag. And it says right here, when flags of two or more nations are displayed, they have to be flown from separate staffs of the same height. Can I have another minute, please?
Unfortunately not, Mrs. Burner.
What?
But thank, no. Three minutes for the public comments. It was four for the budget this evening.
Well, could you at least please consider putting in a code and making it right to respect our flag, if you respect our flag?
Thank you. Uh, Major, you're next. Uh, Madam Clerk, is there any other signups for this evening? Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, city staff and residents that are with us. Mayor, if I had known that if I brought my mother and father with me today, I get extra credit, I would have brought them. So, but next meeting, um, but seriously, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. Um, I want to just say that I value very much, the Broward Sheriff's Office values very much this relationship. We understand that sometimes communications can get heated. But we also understand that there are nothing that really is impossible when two parties are willing to sit down and to speak to one another. I am here on behalf of the Broward Sheriff's Office, Sheriff Dr. Gregory Tony, to speak. I'm here and willing to engage with anyone, your city manager, your public safety director, anyone you tell me to, you individually. Commissioner Houdak, we had a wonderful conversation, multiple conversations. Vice Mayor, the same with you, Commissioner Shunetsky. Commissioner Plout, all my interactions with you have been positive and cordial. And Mayor Drowski, the same with you. We can overcome this. Three scenarios we put together. That first scenario saves about $217,000 that brings the total consideration to 35.5 million. That second scenario saves $896,000 without eliminating positions. It maximizes the vacancy credit well and above what the contract allows and permits because we want to show good faith in this relationship. Scenario three saves, uh, 1.627 million dollars, bringing that consideration, thank you, Mr. Manager, down to 34.1 million dollars. When we look at the $2.3 million overage in the cap aggregate total between the fire and P police contracts, that is reflective of the entire fiscal year. But the contract's in place six months of the fiscal year. So 2.3 million would be 1.15 million. We can overcome that. Scenario three is 1.627 million. That is not a reduction of current staffing levels. That is eliminating current vacancies. That is reorganizing your PD team to be more efficient, to provide the services to this community without reducing the level of service. But scenario two can also overcome that. It already has saved 806, $896,000. And what we're able to do, if you're willing, I can continue to look at maximizing even more vacancies for you in the next six months to overcome the rest of the amount. The amount that we can overcome on the PD side is enough to overcome the fireside, the aggregate total. We believe in this relationship. We want to engage with the city. I just need to know who to speak to. If I can speak to your city manager, to your public safety director, I just need commission consent to move forward with the relationship.
Thank you, Major.
Thank you.
Anyone in the commission chamber that would like to speak during public comment? Going down, Mr. Nolan.
Second time's the charm. I would just like to let the city manager know that I wish I had as good a friend as he does in Commissioner Houdak. Because when he had problems with his insurance, Commissioner Houdak went on Facebook and complained about the problems he was having with his insurance. I'd just like everybody to know here, though, when I merged with the Broward Sheriff's Office, I lost my healthcare and retirement. They promised me healthcare and retirement for 27 and a half years. And when I went to the Broward Sheriff's Office, I lost that. So Mike, could you go on Facebook and let people know that I am upset about losing my healthcare from the city of Deerfield Beach? When we merged, we lost our retirees' healthcare. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nolan. Anyone else in the commission chamber like to speak? Madam Clerk, anyone else online? Mr. Hers, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, Dan Hers, 330 Southeast 19th Avenue. At Sheriff Tony's Town Hall meeting last week, I asked if Rodney Brimlow ever looked for cost savings in the police and fire contracts while Director of Public Safety, even though according to Mayor Gans and at the time Commissioner Drowski, that was one of the reasons the position of Director of Public Safety was created in the first place. The answer I received from Sheriff Tony was no. He never, ever brought up anything to do with cost savings. Contrast that with BSO's willingness to find cost savings for the city in the current contract negotiations, which in essence meant BSO is doing Rodney Brimlow's job for him. I took it upon myself to talk with various BSO employees to find out where money could be saved. Basically, I then was doing Rodney Brimlow's job for him. I'll give just two small examples that I came up with. BSO has uniformed drivers that drive other uniformed BSO has uniformed drivers that drive other uniformed officers around. Certainly, a clerical position could do that for much less money. Also, the turkey giveaway, which is done each Thanksgiving by BSO, is done by uniformed officers. Why is that necessary? And why can't a much lower-paid clerk provide that function? Granted, these are two small examples, but these examples are at least two examples greater than what Rodney Brimlow came up with in his three years as Director of Public Safety and 10 months as city manager. In the video that the city just put out about Mayor Todd at the shredding event, he is quoted as saying, "Our dispute has nothing to do with you guys," meaning, uh, police, meeting the police that was there. Well, what I don't understand then is that six to nine months ago, BSO Deerfield Beach Police Captain Adam Hofstein came in front of the CRA board to explain that BSO officers were not filling up many available BSO time slots to patrol the CRA zone. He then made his case for increasing the hourly wages of BSO patrol.
Thank you, Mr. Hirsch. Time is up. Anyone else online, Madam Clerk? Last chance for inside the commission chamber. Okay, we're going to move on from public comment. Before we do, on item number seven, Mr. Bertuccio, you spoke. I wanted to say at that time, thank you for, for being here. You represent the men and women of 4321 very admirably. You're a good man, honest, very knowledgeable of the issues. Your men and women are lucky to have you there. So please relay that back, back to them, that again, this isn't our fight with them or our fight with you. You do, you do a great job for them and your, and your leadership. So thank you for being here tonight. Mr. City Attorney, we're on to the consent.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Items nine through 18 are currently on consent.
Do we have any polls from the commission, nine through 18?
I'd like to make a comment on 11.
Okay, so that's not a, not a poll. We'll get to that in a moment. Anyone want to poll an item? Okay. Madam Clerk, did anyone sign up to speak on nine through 18? Okay, so Commissioner Shnetzky, go ahead on item number 11.
Also, if it's okay, also 15, also a quick comment.
Sure, go ahead. Number 11 first, please.
Okay. All right, basically, this resolution has increased expenditures in the amount of 350,000 for the streetlight maintenance. Been working very, very hard with the city, with the FPL, with FDOT, to make sure that our streetlights on Powell Line Road in my district and Hillsborough have enough lighting. They were, especially where in quiet waters, there were the whole, I think the north side going towards Hillsborough, they were out. Was able to get about 19 lights fixed, but there's still a lot of lights out on Hillsborough. I know I've been working very closely with Eric Powers, and he's saying, you know, there's repairs needed for equipment that's not there, like wiring, that we don't have that. So this is very, very important. It's a safety factor. We have to have lighting in Hillsborough Boulevard. We have to have adequate lighting in Powell Line Road. Been getting a lot of complaints from constituents. So I definitely approve 11. I think that's what we need. I think right now it's 600,000. This would be additional 350,000, which is what we need. We need to get those lights going.
And item 15?
Item 15, this is concerning the Toastmaster Club. I want to say how important the Toastmaster is. I had gotten into Toastmaster in Boca Raton, and Toastmaster shows people how to put their arguments together, how to be quick on their feet. It's very, very important, you know, it's public speaking. I've, I've worked with a lot of people in Toastmasters that they had no organization of their thoughts, and when they got involved with Toastmasters, it really helped in their public speaking. So I'm definitely in support of this.
Thank you. We'll now open up to the public any discussion on items nine through 18. Madam Clerk, did anyone sign up to ask you that already? Okay, anyone inside the commission chamber like to speak on items nine through 18? Madam Clerk, anyone online for items nine through 18? Okay, we'll close the public comment for items nine through 18. We can vote, can we vote on these? Is it slate, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, you can. We do need a roll call because there are expenditures.
Okay. I'm looking for motion on items nine through 18.
Motion to approve.
Back in. Motion to approve items nine through 18 by Vice Mayor Preston, seconded by Commissioner Plout. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Commissioner Hudak?
Yes.
Commissioner Plout?
Yes.
Commissioner Shnetzky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Preston?
Yes.
Mayor Drowski.
Yes, and that brings us up to comments by administration and legal.
No comments from, no more comments from legal tonight.
None from me, thank you.
Okay, that takes us, Mr. City Attorney, number 19?
We are now at City Commission Business, City Manager's annual performance evaluation. I believe the commissioners are provided with the forms to complete for the evaluation. The city manager's contract, like the previous contract, calls for an annual evaluation process and to have an evaluation done at a public meeting. You can, if you so choose, you could summarize any oral comments that you may have regarding the evaluation. I'm happy to answer any questions. And ultimately, it's up to the commission. It's in your discretion whether or not to propose any merit increases, et cetera, pursuant to his contract. He would get the cost of living adjustment that all the other employees would get.
Okay, thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Vice Mayor Preston, you're first. Thank you for volunteering. Somebody's got to start.
Yeah, that's right. Thank you, Mayor. I think we all know the challenges that we had when Mr. Brimlow applied for the job. It is, in my opinion, though, that when he came in, he came in with multiple challenges in front of him, and he's been able to provide me personally with the information that I have asked of him. One of the things that I have noticed, and I'm glad I can say this, is that the employees seem to be more grounded. The morale seems to be better. That's important to me. That's, that's very important. There is a lot of issues in different communities that we have, different districts, and he has to answer to every one of those. I've been able to get that information concerning the city and my district. Just today, for instance, I sent him some pictures, and the picture was over about an issue over in the Woodsetter area of where there was some ballaces laying on the ground because there was a project to expand the driveway. And the person that called me was part of the association. I sent those to him, and it was in a very short period of time that it became very clear that where the person from the association was saying that they thought that the project, the sidewalk project had ended. That was not the case at all. And he was able to bring clarity to that. And that's just a small example of trying to deal with things. So I'm, I'm glad that things are happening the way they are. I believe that we're going in the right direction. And that's important, especially understanding the multiplicity of issues that we are, that we're having to deal with.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Hudak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it. I'm just going to summarize the final two questions, what have been the major accomplishments of the city manager in the past year. One of the things, and it kind of dovetails to what our vice mayor said, is the improvement of a number of departments. I've seen the morale improve as well, and it's greatly appreciated over the last nine months. Getting the capital projects on track, I think, is extremely important. We honored one of our employees here today, Ronnie, for getting, you know, the Southeast Sixth, Seventh, and Eighth Stormwater Project back on track when it was a fiasco for a while. So I'm really, really pleased with, like you said, the direction that we're going. I, I think we've made a very good decision, and I'm very happy with the decision we made with regards to our current city manager. Some areas of improvement is, of course, he's still learning his, his new position, but he spends a lot of time working on, on items that I think his directors should be working on. You know, as you know, I've got an HR background, and one of the things he and I were working on was the handbook. And, and, and it was just, you know, me saying, hey, you know, there's, you know, you have people here who should be doing that for you. And part of that is, is for him to learn things. I understand that. But he also has to, you know, make sure that his people are growing and make sure that they're doing their job so it doesn't pull him from doing his job. But overall, I'm, I'm very pleased with the performance and the direction.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Plout?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that I appreciate Mr. Rodney Brimlow, his knowledge, his experience, despite what some detractors may say. I, I spend just about every single day here that I get to see him for a few minutes to a few hours. He helps me. He helps me understand a lot of things, the way the city runs. He has information for me. A lot of times online, people say that he's hiding things, and the things that they say he's hiding, I got him an email month before midnight. In fact, there's a lot of times that he, you know, sends something out at midnight, and I told him, "I'm not going to interact with you at midnight when you send something. I'm just going to send a checkmark to let you know that I saw it." I'm thinking it's probably for, for other folks that might see it in the morning, but unfortunately, I have to sit there till 1:00 in the morning because I wouldn't be able to go to sleep without knowing what's in that email. So, so it, it just goes to show that he's putting in so many hours, and when I look at the accomplishments, I say, "This has been a challenging year." Because his position is, we've had three city managers in the last year, when you think about it. Santucci, we had interim Mr. McEw, and, and then Rodney. So when I saw how hard he was working, I said, "Well, why isn't our priority to get an assistant city manager? That should be the first person that you hire. You need some help." And he explained to me that it's not in the budget because Mr. McEw had a severance plan. And so that severance plan was in the budget, and it lasted for, for several months. And it, it made a lot of sense, but it, it ensured that he was, had to work that much harder. So, and at the same time, he had to fill his own position from, you know, from, from our Fire and Safety Director, which I think he found an excellent person. And so also, each event that was planned for our centennial was executed by all the department heads involved in their staff flawlessly. Most of those events from Parks and Recreation, Mr. Warner, great job. And he's exhibited proficiency in understanding and presenting financial concepts, including long-range planning. He understands the purpose of each department and what needs to be done to have everything work in harmony. So I'm very pleased with it. And it hurts my heart when I see people leave to go somewhere else. It doesn't happen too often. Sometimes they have to be terminated if, if, if they don't do a good job, and that has happened, and it's done in a professional manager, um, method and, and for a reason. It's, it's not good to lose talent, but sometimes it's necessary. So my, my evaluation is a good one, and I do want to throw a thought out there for the commission, okay? This doesn't happen all the time where, where we have a situation where we've had three city managers. Mr. Brimlow's been in here for seven months. My, my colleague here, Daniel, and I have been here for, for five months, okay? So when I looked at doing an annual review, that I've only witnessed somebody doing this for five years, I started thinking about, is this really an annual review? No, it's not. It's not even a semi-annual review. There's not enough time, really, for me to evaluate this. So I'm just throwing it out there for the future. If we wanted to consider reevaluating our timetable for evaluations for the city manager, I would say to start off, it should be moved to a calendar year. It should be done in January to see what happened last year, just like any other, of course, fiscal years don't go on New Year's Eve, but that would be a good time for annual. And if we're considering somebody in January that's been in office perhaps for nine months or less, then the first evaluation should happen on the anniversary of when they got in office, the full year. And then after that, it could kind of catch up. So I'm, I'm not saying make it a, an agenda item, but, and we don't have to discuss it tonight, but I think we should all put it in our heads that that might be a great thing to do. So anytime that we do analyze somebody, they really have been in there for a year. And that's all have the same air.
Thank you, Commissioner. The city manager review is governed by the city charter, actually, so it'd have to be...
Be a vote for the...
So I think this would be a good topic to send to them for review, and then we can vet it when it comes back to us.
It's also governed by the contract as well, so the contract would need to be amended if we were going to make any modifications to the timeframe.
Possible things, it doesn't have to go on ballot for a vote, right?
No, I, I think it, I think the timing is just contemplating. It's more about not when this particular city manager started or ended. It's more about the budget, you know, and to happen right before the, the annual adoption of the budget.
Okay, gotcha. Okay.
Whether you agree with that or not, I think that was the, at least, the original intent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Plout. Commissioner Shnetzky, you're next.
Sure. Well, I know this year we've had a lot of challenges. My credo is always, action speaks louder than words. I know I was elected in March. In April, there was a program that was spearheaded by the city manager and also Roy Davis, the Code Enforcement Amnesty Program. I'd like, if he would like to, the city manager, discuss. It just, it just ended from April to September 3rd, the Code Amnesty Program. Could you tell me how that program has fared? Have we done well? Because that was your baby. I'd like to know how, what were the results of that?
I believe that we ended up with $1.2 million for participation in that, and, and I think the revenues were about a quarter million dollars.
Okay.
So it saved, it saved substantial amount of money and also allowed for residents, homeowners, to be able to do more with their home if they wanted to get a loan to expand their home, or if they wanted to sell their home or will it to a child or loved one. It frees up their ability to do that. So we did have, we did have a great participation in, in the program.
Okay. Also, I want to say, and I brought it up before, kudos that we cut $63 million in our budget from last year. That's very substantial. We really streamlined, and that took a lot of effort. Also, the fact that our millage rate has been steady, and also that our bond rating is the highest it could be for a city our size, that says a lot. And that's from the city manager's direction, so I want to give kudos to that. I have three tasks that I just want to throw out there that maybe you could address. Number one, I, I had, I had meetings with you and FAU and also Broward College, their music program. You know, this is the 100th year anniversary of Deerfield Beach. Basically, we had been working to get music performances from FAU and Broward College students to come to Deerfield Beach. I just wanted to have an update on that, what your goals are for that, to the city manager.
So we are, we have been working with FAU for a couple of different programs from them, and we have one contract already that we, an agreement, actually, that we have been working out with one group. And Broward College, we are just getting back some information now from the dean of Broward College that they also are interested in doing some performances here in Deerfield. So those will be happening throughout the upcoming year.
And where would they be performing, FAU and Broward College, where in Deerfield Beach?
FAU, we have a couple of different options. We're, we're also still in negotiations with FAU Graduate School for some entrepreneurial programs that they have with music to have, those, those would be more of a pop-up type event. Some of the other FAU programs are scheduled events, for example, State of the City or Some of the other FAU programs are scheduled events, for example, State of the City or something at the pier or out west at the park. And then with Broward College, for most part, we're looking at park events.
Thank you. Now, I know I had brought up also, you know, West Deerfield Beach, I mean, District One, they have some wonderful events on the beach. District Two, Oviedo McKethan Park, great events. District Four, we have Constitution Park, you know, the the thing that they have, the, what is it called? The sip and stroll in District Four. District Three, we really don't have anything going on in terms of things to please the community for District Three. So my my question to you is, what will be done in the future for District Three? I know you had spoken about some sort of concerts with the community center, West Community Center on Powerline. Could you please elaborate on that?
We are looking at some activations we can do at the West Deerfield Community Center because it is in a unique location. And it does have some green space on the outside as well, as well as some additional parking. We just have to be careful with not interfering with the fire department, obviously, that's right next door. But that area we can use and we're looking to activate that throughout the year as well.
And my last item, I know we, I had brought up about maybe a public safety advisory board. Because again, we're going to have some really big questions concerning public safety. What direction are we going to go? Is that something that you might look at? Implementing a public safety advisory board so that the the public could have more of a discourse? I was on the cultural affairs advisory board and we had always a discourse about that and I was on planning and zoning. So is that something you might consider as well, a public safety advisory board? And also, one other question with that, a little caveat. You had mentioned sort of like having workshops with the BSO situation where the public is involved and actually interactive. Is that something you might want to do down the road in the near future as well?
The public workshops are absolutely going to be taking place. Those have to take place so that all the residents, as well as the commission, can be informed of the various options that are that are available. And also to allow for BSO to present all of their options as well.
Okay. And how about the public safety advisory board? Is that something you might want to consider down the road?
An advisory board itself would have to be created by the commission. But but certainly, I think something like that could be useful. It's worth discussing.
Thank you.
Anything else, Commissioner?
No, that's it. Thank you so much.
Okay. My turn. So, Mr. City Attorney, you've certainly had your hands full in seven months. I'm sure you did not anticipate everything that was going to come your way. The number one thing that I like that you have implemented with respect to your role as the city manager is accountability. I think you've done that across the board, throughout all the employees, throughout the organization, and done it in a way where it's not heavy handed. I think that's important to at least have that, you know, instilled into the culture of the of the city. You know, in addition to that, you've had some turnover in your directors going forward. And so you've had to take the opportunities to, you know, go through procurement and make sure that those positions get filled. So I don't think you've ever had in your seven months, I don't think you've had a, you know, a, you know, if you had a football lineup, you know, you wouldn't have the same players in the same lineup for every game because you've had different players. But now that I think that is starting to stabilize going forward, I think that'd be a benefit to you and to your team. I would like to see the assistant city manager position filled at some point in the future. I think that will help take some of the duties off of you going forward. I've always wondered how a city manager does it to run the city day to day and to have five bosses at the same time, because you're taking five sets of phone calls, you're taking five sets of meetings, you're taking five sets of text messages, you're taking five sets of emails. And this is on a daily basis. And so you're not responding to just one, you're responding to five. And so 12, 12:00 midnight to 2:00 AM is my prime time for for emails, as you well know. And for some reason, you're up responding to them and and my text messages and my phone calls as well. So certainly, so there is no lack of communication, at least with me on on this dais and getting the information that I request or I need to help make a decision up here. You've always been able to give that to us in a in a timely manner. And then and then lastly for me is, you know, I'm sure you did not expect the situation that has developed with BSO. And you've had a lot of insults hurled your way, but you have handled it extremely professionally. You've handled it like like a gentleman and a professional. I'm sure it's not easy on you and your family, but you have never responded in kind to any of the cruel comments that have that have come your way. And I think those are two of your finer characteristics, that you've handled the situation with dignity and most importantly, with grace. And I think those are two redeeming qualities that you have. And I think you are the right man at the right time for the city of Deerfield Beach. Your background fits perfectly into the situation that we are having to go before us. So I think God has put you here for a reason and we are thankful for that. And in going forward, I know you're going to be a great resource here to the city of Deerfield Beach. You're only seven months in, so when we get that full year review, I I think it'll be a better, you know, cleaner assessment that we have going forward. And and I think some of your priorities are this commission's priorities as well. For example, I know Oleg talked during the budget presentation just tonight about reducing debt. And I think that's one of your priorities as well going forward, to give the city some more opportunities and flexibility with respect to its finances. So I think those categories serve you, serve you well. And so I have I have high marks for you. Commission, anything further? No lights, otherwise we're up to comments by Mayor and City Commission. We'll start with District One.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll try to be very, very brief. Please remember the deadline to to take any action for your ad valorem tax questions is September 17, 2025. The property appraiser staff will be at City Hall on Tuesday, September 16 from 11:30 to 1:00 PM, if you need to file for exceptions. The value of your property is harder to discuss this late in the process, but they can still help be helpful to you with questions and advise about the petition filing process. Please note, you can also call 954-357-6831 for any questions about the non-ad valorem assessments like fire and stormwater. If you were previously previously homesteaded, confirm that your homestead and any other property tax savings exemptions, such as the senior exemption, are still reflected. Look in your your property value this year box on the 2025 trim notice. Residents who bought a property last year and made it their place of permanent residence as of January 1, 2025 should file for all exemptions for which they are eligible by the September 17 deadline. Online filing goes until 11:59 PM on that day. When looking at the value of your property, there is a market value and there is an assessed value. These two numbers are identical if you recently purchased your home as it is brought up to full market value before any exemptions are applied or caps go into effect the following tax year. 3% cap for homesteaded properties, a 10% cap for non-homesteaded properties. Please be reminded this 10% assessment cap is for non-homesteaded properties and does not get applied to Broward County School Board Millage. Residents who have owned their property for some time might believe their market value is too high, but need to understand that they are being taxed against the assessed value, not the proper, not the market value. Hopefully, I've clarified a few of your questions. But as stated earlier, the property appraiser staff will be at City Hall on Tuesday, September 16 from 11:30 to 1:00 PM. If you need to ask questions or file exemption, and you can also call that number 954-357-6831. Those are all the comments I have today.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Shonitzki, District Three.
Well, District Three is in is in excellent shape right now. In Century Village, in Durham J, I want to give kudos out to Rodney and Eric because in Durham J, on the second floor catwalk roof, it collapsed. And it was an emergency. That's a that's a 50 year old, that's a 51 year old building that the roof collapsed. And that day, we were able to get an emergency permit. I outreach to the city manager and Eric, and we were able to get an emergency permit approved so that the contractor was immediately able to take action and it was secured. Also want to give kudos to Roy Davis and also our city manager. Basically, in Umbridge, Umbridge, which is a section of Century Village, the lift was not working. Now, it's a it's a garden, it's a garden unit of condo association. And on the second floor, there are a lot of people that they're disabled. They have walkers that cannot get down. So I outreach to Roy Davis and our city manager. Basically, the lift company, they got a permit, but they never did an inspection and it didn't work. The lift wasn't working. So I outreach to Roy and Rodney and they were able to do an investigation on it to try to see what they could do to get them to, you know, to do the work they're supposed to do. I also want to give kudos to Eric. Century Village, their beautification program, they're looking for a permit for their bridge in Central Park. They're building a beautiful bridge in Central Park and the permit process is moving along. So I want to say thank you very much. Also, I want to say on Wednesday, September 10, sponsored by Walmart in Century Village, there's going to be free vaccination for flu, COVID, shingles and respiratory and pneumonia at La Club at Century Village East. So if there's anyone out there in Zoom that's listening, please, Wednesday, September 10, you can get vaccination. And I want to also point out on September 10, there's going to be a public meeting on the community center in West Powerline, 580 West Powerline Road, concerning stormwater maintenance. And that's going to affect both District Three and District Four. It's going to start at 7 o'clock, so please be aware of it, anyone in my district that's listening. In terms of Crystal Lake, I went to the HOA meeting that they had. They're beautifying the recreation center. They're redoing their main ballroom, their meeting center, they're putting in new windows and doors and hurricane hurricane windows as well. So they're beautifying that rec center, which is a pinwheel for Crystal Lake. On October 7, Crystal Lake HOA is going to be having Broward Hospital Outreach meeting about the the community, telling what Broward Hospital has to offer on October 7. On Saturday, September 13, Crystal Lake is having a community auction in their ballroom on Northwest 18th Street. In my other community, the Meadows, there was an exposed wire or cable right outside the entrance. And I outreach to the city manager and also Eric from the Building Department, and they immediately condored off that area to make sure it's not alive, the cable. So I want to say thank you very, very much. In terms of the city, this is very, very important. I want to say thank you. It was a team effort from the mayor, from Mike, from Ben, from from Tom and also State Representative Mitch Rosewald. Basically, the American Legion Post 287, their building was built in 1947. Four years ago, their air condition went went on the fritz. They haven't had air conditioning for four years. The city commission team and the the city manager and the city attorney, we brainstormed and we were able to get a sponsor, somebody that wanted to donate an air conditioning. So now it's usable. So I want to say thank you. It was a it was a team effort from the city. This Saturday, I went to the other American Legion Post 162, which is on US 1. They had their installment of officers, so I was very proud to be there. And finally, I went Saturday to the Deerfield Beach Women's Club. They had a fashion show. I think I was the only guy there, but I represented the city. And I want to give my kudos to Katie Freitag. She did a fantastic job. Kiwanis was there. They did a fantastic job putting that fashion show together, which is charitable. And also, I want to give kudos to BSO, two deputy sheriffs, Evelyn Gomez and Caitlin Nelson participated in the fashion show and they did a great job. So I want to say thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. District Four, Commissioner Plow.
Thank you, Mayor. Saturday, I had the pleasure of attending the Fourth Annual Picnic at the Waterways in in our district and I met a lot of people there, made a lot of great contacts, saw some of the board members that the mayor and I have interacted with. They're going to be the most affected by the 10th Street connector from the Sawgrass to 95. I wouldn't say that the most affected, but the first affected. They're going to be putting up a wall there at some point in the near future. But the people were have a pretty good attitude about it. Also, BSO was there. Caitlin and Evelyn were there. And I got to see the Bloodhound. I haven't seen him in a year. He's looking good. And so that was pretty cool. And also, I'd like to do a little shout out for Roy Davis, does an amazing job running the the code department. It seems like I picked up a new hobby around my area. It's picking up snipe signs and and some some I can't reach because as Mr. Power said, they're getting increasingly agile. Because some of these, some of these signs are are up there 20 or 30 feet and we can't even get them down. So they have to, they have to bring a truck, a bucket truck out to to get them. So we're just kind of trying to keep the district clean and keep the city clean. And I was excited to go out on Saturday morning for the soft opening of the pier. It is beautiful. I can't wait till it's fully opened and we have a really proper grand opening for that. And that's all I have to say, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Mayor, District Two.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to say that my colleague was just talking about the pier. I have a chance to go out there. The pier looks absolutely awesome. So citizens of Deerfield Beach, you get a chance, go out and enjoy. Thanks to our colleague here, he brought it up to the commission that you can enjoy fishing free of charge until the first of the year. And so I think that's a nice thing. I've seen people out there and they are really enjoying it. It is so clean and very nice. City staff did a really good job with that. So the the pier is good. Mr. City Manager, I'd like to get an update about the the flags at the parks.
The flags at the park are in the fiscal year 26 budget.
Okay, so okay.
There are six parks, is that right, Greg? Six that we were, yes, six parks.
Okay, thank you, sir. And then to my Commissioner Shonitzki, you know, you you you're not taking the credit, but I'm going to give it to you. The air conditioning issue with the Legion Hall was not a city issue. We had a city commissioner that saw a problem. He spoke with the state rap and he did a great job with that. That's the bottom line. That was not a city issue at all. And I know he wants to give the credit to everybody else except himself. But it was not city, it was not city sponsored. I want everybody to know that. We had a, we had a city commissioner saw a problem. He attacked it. And you should have seen the results. So there was a very nice gathering of people. My colleague attended it and we were very happy. So I know, Commissioner, you want to want to give that to everybody else, but you got to tell it like it is, okay? So we thank you for that. You did a great job with that and and so and I thank you. And that's it for me, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. The advantage of going last is that most of my comments are covered by my colleagues, so I only have two things that were not covered. 9/11 is this week, so please remember that solemn occasion while most of us are going to take a moment of silence or honor the day or something of that nature. Just remember that for thousands of families, they're reliving their worst day. And so I think if you remember back to 9/11, if you remember your feelings on that day and afterwards, just the complete disbelief on 9/11 itself and then the just total anger after that, don't let those feelings go away. Remember that our enemies are after us and they're after us because we live in the best country in the entire world. But we are still targets out there and and just take that moment to remember not only those families that are reliving their worst day, but also that we do live in the best country. But there are still people that are jealous of us and will come after us at whatever cost it may take. The other item I have is you may be seeing in news media about the. The other item I have is you may be seeing in news media about the FDOT program to repaint intersections across the entire state of Florida. And it's not just, I just wanted to bring this on everyone's, everyone's attention. This is not just LGBTQ issue at all. I mean, that seems to be the initial target, but the city of Deerfield Beach, we received our own letter from the Florida Department of Transportation regarding northeast 3rd Avenue. And which is so complexing to me because we received the first MPO grant to do the artwork on that street. And, and we were praised for our artwork for that street. And now we received a letter to paint it over. But we did and we complied. But I'm just letting everyone know, it's not, any, no city is, is exempt from, from what's going on. And like it or not, we received our own letter and I have it here if anybody wants, wants a copy. And that's all that, all that I have. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned by Vice Mayor Preston, seconded by Commissioner Hudak. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.